All right, I'd like to call the committee, the whole meeting, the village board committee, the whole meeting to order at 6:03. We have five members present. Trustee Arndorfer and trustee Morbaldoff are running late, but they will be joining us. So if you can make a note when they join us, that would be great in the minutes. We are, we have two items this evening. After last minute, the last few meetings when we've talked about the public works process, Rebecca and I reviewed the feedback that we received from the trustees and set these two agenda items to take a minute and look at the process, kind of where we are, where we're going, to make sure we're all on the same page and we're filling in information as it's needed and requested and available. And then we will proceed on to a discussion of revisit the service level discussion with regards to the facility options and the process and how to proceed with that if there is interest on the part of the board. So we will, to begin, so as you said, there's a, as you saw, there's a memo in the packet that kind of gives the context for this. And then we have a PowerPoint. I'm going to hand it over to village manager Ewald to guide us through that.
So first up for tonight, review process for evaluating a future public works facility. Wanted to just provide an overview of reviewing what's our role in the process? And how will we get the information that we need at each step? So in this slide, it clarifies some of our main components. The village board makes policy decision based upon three different outputs. One being community input, two, the consultant's technical review and professional experience, three, and then village staff. Primarily on this project, we have the village manager's office evaluating a business decision, public works and planning and development, asking the questions, how does the consultant output fit with what we know about Shorewood? And fit into our larger plans? To recap, there have been seven public works analysis completed over the past 15 years. In May of 2022, we had the UWM grad student analysis, which recapped this and talked about process and framework for how our board could move forward and making decisions on the future of the public works facility. At that time, there was a decision by the village board to investigate potential sites for moving forward with the future public works facility. So here's what we know about the current facility. There's an inefficient layout and it lacks adequate space to meet modern needs. There's safety hazards for employees. It's not compliant with ADA regulations. It's difficult to retain and recruit employees at all levels within the department. The human costs for the DPW staff. In the past, there's been a lack of acknowledgement of those working conditions and worker safety. It's not environmentally sustainable. Just on average, looking at utility bills, the site loses approximately 80,000 per year in energy inefficiencies. It requires approximately 1.5 million in renovations by 2025, or pardon me, 2027. And will likely require a full repaving of the facility to meet PECFA compliance soon, based upon our semi-annual inspections. The retaining wall on the east side of the facility is in poor conditions. Two other knowns about this site. TID 3 may cover wall and utility relocation should the site be redeveloped for a taxable use if consistent with the project plan parameters specified within TID 3. TID 3 cannot cover those expenses if it's redeveloped into a non-taxable village use. So after the UWM study, the decision to look at future sites, the village board gave direction to evaluate options for rebuilding on the current site and a new build on alternative locations. Again, the UWM 2022 study acknowledged that not all information will be available at once. So much so that within the scope of their report, they provided decision trees that organized information that needed to be determined now, information we needed to know now and information that was not needed now in order to get to a next step. Based upon what we knew and from that study, we proceeded to develop an RFP based upon the information needed to proceed as an outcome of that UWM study. That led us to RFP and then eventually contract with the Beriantos Group. They have three phases within the scope of their contract with us. The first is facility needs assessment. In the first four months, they've completed this task and it's been updated at not only the village board, but in our first community workshop. They are now in the process of site evaluation. We have approved site selection criteria, of which we're going to review tonight with that group under special order of business. We're going to review the site, sites, their rankings. And at the conclusion of the evening tonight, the board is being asked to move three of those sites forward to conceptual design. Following that, we will then go into conceptual design, where they will review those items located there, such as zoning and engineering features, reuse demolition phasing options, identify the benefits and the drawbacks of those particular sites, develop some narrative and cost estimates of what a future facility may, may look like in cost in those particular areas, and then present those study findings to provide the board a basis with their next steps. One of the first things that we did in the first phase of their project was in evaluation of those needs. We also evaluated what those, the needs assessment determined to impact facility needs. So we looked at service levels. We found that only refuse and yard waste collection are necessary service discussions for purposes of reviewing the future of a new public works facility because of the square footage that's generated and required in a new site. We're here again in the scope. This again just outlines the detail of this portion of phase two of their contract with where we're at. Again, for purposes of tonight, we want to determine two things in this phase, determine whether to proceed with a transfer station, potential impacts to service, and also to determine three sites to move forward to conceptual design. After those decisions are made, then we'll move to the last phase of the Beriantos scope, which is conceptual design. Goals of that scope in that phase is to determine whether a transfer station should be included in the public works facility in the future and to rank three sites to move forward.
To preliminary design.
Preliminary design.
Yeah, I think there was a typo on the last slide. I didn't catch that.
So what happens after the Beriantos contract? Is this high level that we provided to just future project phases? The first, which would be preliminary or 30% design for a period of approximately six months, followed by preliminary or 60% design for another six months, and then final design for another six months. To lay out all of the components, we put this within the format of a Gantt chart because it's too, it's too big to put on a PowerPoint slide. So included within the scope of your packet, there is a Gantt chart that kind of reviews those activities and how they line up in 22, 23, and 24. The graph concludes at the end of 24. So that means that final design, if this schedule would actually stay on a track within these estimated timeframes, final design would be concluded at the end of 2024.
So the purpose of that overview was to just recap the types of direction and decisions that we've made so far. And they've really been in the form of giving direction. There hasn't been formal motions or, you know, we haven't settled on a site, you know, nothing. And tonight, we are not being asked to pick a site. We're asking, we're being asked, there are basically about five options, and we're being asked to eliminate two if we're ready to do that. And so hopefully by talking about the impact of different options based on the results that were brought forward last meeting, we can talk a little bit more about impact to service level and just see where the board at. And so this is kind of the chance to, so I want to get feedback on the process recap. And then, because this is our chance to talk to each other about the process and, and does it have what you need? And is it aligned? Just to clarify what we're being asked to do when. And then with the second item, talking about service levels, that's our chance to talk to each other about what's our comfort level with service level changes. So if we, you know, are you interested in options that would impact services? Or do we just move on from that? So feedback, questions on the PowerPoint that Rebecca just brought forward? Yes, trustee, I mean, Ursink.
I just have two questions. With the TID 3, you have it listed as if it is a taxable portion, if it's a taxable piece of land, let's say we redevelop the whole thing.
Not we, a developer, not the village.
You're right. A developer, redevelopment, you know, we, we sell the property, it gets redeveloped. We can use TID 3 to fix that retaining wall. But let's say half the site is, is village owned and half the site is developed. Is that, where does that fit?
Whatever improvements are done with the retaining wall need to be compliant with the TID 3 project plan. And in that project plan, it speaks to public infrastructure and utility work that can be done for purposes of helping support development within that district. So without knowing the specific site plan and how those logistics come together, it's hard to answer that question, but.
Could you foresee, let's say, half that parcel is developed, them only doing half the retaining wall? Or once that retaining wall gets started, they're probably going to want to do the whole thing? Right? It's probably necessary to do the whole retaining.
If half the retaining wall were for a village public works facility, I would presume that we would need to fund that half.
Okay, and let's say half was for other uses, but it's still sort of village, village-owned property.
It might be out of scope, but.
Okay.
We are out of scope. But if it's not for purposes of redevelopment, it would definitely not be an eligible cost from the way I currently read it. Any of these options, like, will be dependent on how that plan actually comes together and would need to be reviewed and vetted in accordance with the TID 3 project plan.
Okay, my other question was, there was a side where it was slide that, it was the high-level slide that talked about six months for 30, yes, this slide. Could you just clarify what, what this actually means? So Beriantos and Norman's team, they're doing the design, and we're going to see a design or conceptual design. Is this 30% of the actual design that we kind of want? Like, if we pick a site, we go through with it, this is 30% of that design completion, 60% of the design completion and final design completion over the course of a year and a half?
Yes.
From Beriantos or is not, Beriantos is not doing?
Based upon your purchasing policy, we would be going back out to RFP for a design engineer on the site.
Okay, so, and that's different than what they're doing right now?
Correct.
What they're doing right now is just conceptual?
Correct.
Right, the next phase of work, if you go back a slide, I think that's where we were getting hung up last meeting, was where we are right now is just looking, we've had a site evaluation. There are a couple of options. They're looking for us to give directions on which of those options are palatable to do number three with conceptual design. And that's where we would get more information about costs, demolition, you know, all those things. And then we would have all that information and data related to those three options in two months. And that would be another chance to look at that, evaluate it, and then we will be asked to rank one, two, and three. Doesn't mean that we're going to buy those things. It means that they would proceed with preliminary design. We would go out to RFP.
For full.
For the 30, 60, 90.
Everything that's needed.
For preliminary design. And if in the preliminary stage ranked, you know, our number one choice, just they come up with a dead end and it's not feasible for whatever reasons, then they would go to number two and start that preliminary all over. And if it, and if number two, because there's only so much you can get from a conceptual design process, and then preliminary design, it costs money. So if we want to get preliminary designs for all three of the top sites, then we have to come back and look at that as a budget item because we haven't budgeted for that.
Okay, that's great. So, so once we, once we're at the process and where we, we're going to move forward with the designs, that, that process is going to be a year and a half of, of, of design until that designs are completed. And then we will be 100% go with a design for a new DPW, right?
Right, and land acquisition.
And land acquisition. So we could break ground essentially a year and a half. Theoretically, if we had the site, we had the drawings, we could start breaking ground in a year and a half after those plans are, are done.
End of 2024.
End of 2024.
Way down the road on it.
I'm just wondering timeline. I just want to know.
We don't own yet.
No, no, I'm just.
Part of preliminary design would be site acquisition or land acquisition. And if that goes well, you know, it would.
Yeah, no, I just want to, you know, just understand the timeline a little bit better, so.
Well, I'm happy, I'm happy that you brought it up because when we put this together, you know, that's the overview. And then, this was really prepared with trustee Kudo in mind. I said, let's get down everything that's on our head.
Lucky man.
Put it on paper, right, that we know of right now. To try, to try to outline for people, like, here's, here's the process that we go to. This becomes, you know, just, this is the overall framework. In a perfect world, if it all happened and was executed in this timeframe, yes. Not until the end of 2024. But that's one of the reasons why we want to be thoughtful and talk about this decision. TID 3, you know, will close at some point. It would be good to be able to forecast and look to the future in terms of if funds would be used, what would that do to that performal? How would it work? In addition to also financial planning for whatever we're looking to do. I mean, those are, these are things that we put within the scope of the long-range financial plan. And then we review those analytics to see what does that mean for the future of the village? How does that align with other projects? How will that funding mechanism work? So for us, having this, I thought this was an outstanding exercise to go through because I think it helped even, you know, some people within a part of the team realize that there's not a yes or no of something tonight. There's a lot of different checkpoints that require this body and future bodies to weigh in to make sure that we're on track and working in a way that we feel is responsible in the best interests of the village.
Fantastic, thank you.
Trustee Stokbrand.
So on this Gantt diagram, the Beriantos contract goes through conceptual design to, does it include interim phase ESA?
No, that was an option that after the last meeting, there was a, a number of requests for more detailed information than Beriantoscope called for in conceptual design. But that is not necessarily something that you would do. Well, it would be stuff that you would do in preliminary design, but it brings more sites into that preliminary design level.
So where does his contract end on this quarter one of 2023?
Which slide are you on?
The Gantt chart.
The Gantt chart, his, the Beriantos contract ends after conceptual design.
Okay, so we don't have anything in the, do we have anything in the budget for these other things for 2023? I'm not familiar with any budgetary allotment for the interim phase ESA, the 30% design, the 60% design. Unless I'm missing something.
No, we don't within the scope of the 2023 budget. So the goal is to have some level of direction so that we're incorporating and recalibrating in terms of the long-range financial plan, which is what we're going to take up in May.
Okay, so.
So I can't get ahead of myself.
For all intents and purposes, where it says quarter two and quarter three and quarter four on this chart, we're not doing it at this point because we don't have any money in the budget for it. Is that correct?
Correct, but I also don't have a decision from this board to proceed.
Right, and there's no placeholder.
Correct.
Until 2020. So what we decide at the end of the first quarter, everything is basically on hold in terms of spending money on this until 2024. Is that correct?
Correct, unless other funds are identified.
Do you have any ideas on that that I should know about?
You know, I'm, I'm trying not to get ahead of myself because, because while I would love to be able to get to, I, I mean, there's no one who wants to go into these other steps more than I would. But I also recognize that the only way I get there is with this team. So like if there's, I'm not, we're not going to spend time, you know, pursuing other avenues unless there's a desire or direction from this group in order to do so.
So that would be part of our discussion moving forward, where it's if it is the will of the board to RFP another set of services, we have the ability to do that.
Another question, so what if we decide we want one spot? And obviously someone else could come and buy that land, right? And we don't have any money set aside for it. So what would our options be? I mean, could we buy the land now and say, we got the land, we decided to move it. We've got the land, but we aren't, we don't have anything in the plan to fund it until, say, we get more done about the streetlights. Let's say in the long-range financial plan, we decide we want to at least know we've got the land and we can, you know, have that in place without having any money in the budget and not wanting the land to slip away. What are our options?
Then we would take a look at what options would be available. And then I'd bring them back to you and we'd have that discussion.
Trustee Kudo.
So I have a question, maybe this is from Mr. Beriantos or Becca. So based on the, the sites that we went through, I'm trying to bring. Based on the sites that we went through last time, I think it was four individual sites, three of them, whatever it was.
Three, three sites outside.
Three sites outside, but also the village. So four, four total sites.
And there were different options associated with those.
I remember the.
Yeah, and we'll go over it again tonight, yeah.
So my question is, has there been, have there been any further conversations with the city of Milwaukee, with elected officials over there, with the owners of those sites to see if any of them are? Because as, as we're sort of windowing down this list, right? I just want to make, my concern at this exact moment is that we pick three sites and those three, pick three sites, right? And those three sites are not, two of those sites are not full. And we're wasting time going through conceptual design. We're wasting time going through sort of the next steps. And so I'm just wondering if there's an update on any of the three sites that are not in the village? Because I do worry about.
Comment? We don't have a lot more information, but we did hear from, I believe, one of your trustees who works in environmental.
Former trustee.
Former trustee. And what he indicated is that the Vienna site is, there's other people looking at it for purchase.
Okay, so no.
I don't know anything further. We haven't done anything with the city or a look at environmental costs.
Because that's in the next phase.
That would be the next phase.
So beyond some sort of panic, sort of back and forth, there's no.
Right, because process-wise, that's, we're not there yet.
I just wonder, I'm wondering, I mean, I feel like we're putting, how can we go to a conceptual design, three sites?
Because.
One of them's not for sale.
We're talking, because what was presented to us are options that happen to involve different pieces of land. And so we're being asked to evaluate the options and eliminate ones that we, we don't find palatable. So then they would go and say, if this was the option, okay, the land, da, 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 da. And that's the next step. So you might not agree with that sequencing, but.
It's like we're, we have, we're thinking about buying and, and we have a house that we want to design and we have sort of the first steps of what the house could look like, but we haven't.
No, we have, no, we did analysis of what do you need? How big of a facility? How much square feet do you need? How much square feet do you have? You don't have enough. Here are some options of what you could do, should we pursue any of these? That's where we're at. And the next one is, if we were to pursue these options, do we have the pieces in place and can we acquire what we need to make that happen?
And I guess my question is, are these really options? Or are they just three properties that we picked that have acreage?
I don't know how to explain it differently. Trustee Morbaldoff?
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, I, I get where we're at. You know, we, and I understand that it is difficult when we all want more information to move forward, but we've got to keep moving forward. And I think it's going to be, any big project is going to be really challenging. And there are going to be things that we all wish we had more information on. But I do think that we have to trust the process on moving forward. And, you know, to me, it is like a good analogy of like buying, of buying a house. But it's like, kind of like, I watch the show Love It or List It on TLC, right? Like, do you want to stay in your house that you have? Or do you want to look at other properties that may or may not have everything you need? And, you know, unlike a show, like, we're not guaranteed to get the ones. Like, but, you know, like, when we, if we decide that what we need is in a different option, you know, yeah, one of those might go away. But then we would look for another property that would have the things that we need, right? It's like if your family is too big for the house you're in, you know you need a bigger house. Well, are you building an addition onto your current house? Or are you finding a house with, you know, four bedrooms? And if all the houses you like with four bedrooms sell, then you go look for more four-bedroom houses. It's kind of how I view it. And to me, the bigger decision that I think that this board needs to, like, we need to have the conversation about, and I think that we're going to do that tonight, is like, do we want to keep the house we've got? And I, to me, that's kind of where the decision point is, is like, is it the will of the board? Is it the desire of this community to keep the current site? Or are we going to say, we've got to look elsewhere? And like, that's just, to me, the biggest decision.
That's exactly what we're being asked to do tonight. So the cow is to go back and do some backfill because there was some, it just didn't seem like the board had had their opportunity to talk to each other. We had been receiving a lot of information. But what I heard from the, from some of the board members was we haven't had time to talk to each other about it, to see where we're at, so.
I will add one more thing, though, to trustee Kudo's point. I do think it would be wise for us to have conversations with Milwaukee common council members of the, you know, who represent districts that we are looking at. Even if we don't end up with any of these three sites, maybe they're different sites. And, you know, knowing that the official, you know, process maybe has that later, I think it would be smart for us in our relationship to do that.
We talked about setting, reaching out. Rebecca's going to reach out to Alderman Brastoff and Alderwoman Cog's offices. And we just didn't get it scheduled before today because we were talking about it last week. So to that point.
Then that, that makes me feel good to just know. Because if like, if there was going to be.
Yeah, so to be clear.
We would want to know that off the bat.
Exactly, so, and that again would all be, it's, again, I heard loud and clear that you wanted those meetings to happen already, and they haven't. So that's kind of where we're at. But we're not, yeah, exactly, we're not against it. And it's definitely, tonight, it's really about, you know, the options that are about how it would work to have a facility here and other places. That's what we're being asked for tonight. Trustee Arndorfer.
Yeah, thanks for pulling all this together, Rebecca. It was helpful. And yeah, I would agree with trustee Baldoff that, you know, we have to be, you know, comfortable with the. comfortable with a certain level of ambiguity as we go through this, you know, for better or worse. Just based on my own experience, I mean, having worked with, you know, adjacent to very large, you know, systems transformation projects at, you know, manufacturing facilities several times larger than our yard, you never start with, you know, perfect knowledge until you get into it. So, I mean, that's just part of the deal here. I guess a question I had is, at what point do we have the flexibility within this to, you know, let's say one site, it's pretty, we do the initial analysis, see that, you know, one site is clearly pretty off the table and the others have significant issues. At that point, do we have the option of expanding the search? Or, okay.
Yeah, my scope was, look up, I have the number. But in my mind, we've gone past the, for this scope, I've looked at, identified as many sites as I can. Now I'm narrowing it down. I'm at the point where I'm asking the village to pick three so we can evaluate them so you can consider the features of each, but.
So that would be a separate scope of work. I think that's what we need to do. That's what we'll do.
Okay, okay. Yeah, that's what I wanted to clarify. Okay, thank you.
Trustee, your sync.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. We might be going around circles at this point, but at what points, at what point in this process do we actually like start reaching out to these sites? Like if we identify Vienna is our number one option, is this something that next week, tomorrow, you know, we're going to start kind of that process to let people know that we're interested in this site? Where do we, where do we go from here? That's, that's.
Yeah, I think, wasn't there talk about whether to engage a broker, whether that would be part of the conceptual design correction?
Correct. So one of the things we would need to do would be to engage someone in that process. We've reached out to other municipalities who have done that to obtain examples of their RFP process to do so. I'm hoping to learn more about the sites as we go through conceptual design to get to the, some of the questions we have in terms of what's the volatility for losing some of these sites? And that may dictate the timeline that the board works from. So that's not something I control, but you will need to make those decisions as it relates to RFPs for those services. You know, and working with us when we say, here are the options, these are the different avenues we could pursue. You'll then need to weigh in on those decisions because some of them, you know, may accelerate your process. And then I'm asking for, you know, an exemption to the purchasing policy because we have to move faster. Some may not. So I, we just want to know that volatility so I can come to you and say, here's what we know. Now here are the questions we have in terms of how you proceed.
And then just as unofficially, I had conversations with Alderman Brostoff and he was on surface very supportive of a project like this in his district. But unofficially.
That information.
Unofficially.
And also Director Greppentrug, last time you said that you made preliminary calls to the city in terms of zoning and things like that. So Trustee Morbaldoff and Trustee Kudo, we did, you know, there's been some outreach to the city, very preliminary, preliminary and high level. And the doors are open for, for the next step.
I've also been in communication with the broker for the Vienna site with some questions. So I'm just waiting to reconnect to know if that's one of the sites we're going to look at, then we dive in with a whole bunch of questions.
I can offer something. We did reach out to civil engineering firm Two Strand and had a video conference with them to talk about the Morris Boulevard site. And so they gave us some good insight. They know a lot about the infrastructure that we didn't know yet about. So we're going to talk further with them, although I'm kind of waiting until I get some direction from you, whether I engage a civil engineering firm like Strand. And, and also whether they could look at the other sites from an engineer's point of view, what kind of sewer, stormwater, rating, traffic issues that the site may, these sites may have. So we're, but we're holding off right now.
So essentially, you know, we meet every two weeks or twice a month. And so if there's, as there's information based on what we, the direction we give tonight, then there will be opportunities for real time reports, if you will, and, and the team will come, come forward with their best recommendations for and ask for direction. So Trustee Stokbrand.
So at what point do we go into closed session so that we don't jeopardize our bargaining or negotiation? And from a land purchase point of view, I mean, if we, tonight I'll stand up and say Vienna, like, wow. Okay, I think the price just went up $20,000. You know what I'm saying? What, what advice? Not here. I think it's time to be sensitive about how much we discuss anything like this and.
Based on my experience other municipalities and counties that I've done site searches for, at this stage, they retained a Realtor for a fee versus percent of commission on the land and have a limited contract with them. And then I, well, they work and we work in tangent and typically they put together their standard real estate search list for, you know, standard table format of the site, the land costs, environmental history, past owners. And typically the boards have authorized them to speak directly in, in blind or anonymously to these owners, like, hey, I've got an owner looking at the site. And where are you at selling or even approaching ones who aren't for sale? Like we actually, we did, we didn't approach them, but we identified sites that we thought could be for sale, but they've gone ahead and done that too. So again, so it's not in your, in your records that you're talking about the site, they're doing it for you. And I, and I wouldn't want to do it either because I might blow your cover as they figure out who I'm hired for or by.
So did you say that would be like a commission or they'd be on a retainer or how would that work?
On a fixed fee, just, we want you to look at sites and here we're going to pay you X thousand. At least the other municipalities didn't want to be tied to the broker necessarily for going all the way, the transaction fee. So that's what they, they worked out.
And so to the point of closed session, is there anything that we are anticipated? Any content that we are discussing tonight that we could bring into closed session to be, or are we not at that point where we would be, we would be eligible to, it would meet the criteria for a closed session discussion?
I don't believe you're at a point that you would be eligible, but you're also not agendized for a closed session. But we can definitely go through that screen and I'm happy that a member of the board did bring that up. I think that was a great point, Kathy.
So there's nothing on our agenda later tonight that puts us at risk, you know, that we should hold for a closed session? Thank you very much. All right. Any final questions or comments about process? Because I want to start the next item at least by quarter of. All right. Thank you very much. So moving on to the next item. This is our chance to talk about Public Works Services with how they, they relate to the facility. And there's been some discussion on the board of different ways to go about that. So the purpose of this item is to recap what we know about core services and service level. What we have been told about possible impact to service level or decisions and as far as the scope of this site evaluation, DPW facility evaluation. If there, if it is the will of the board to go further into detail to review core services and other things, that would be, this is our chance to establish that and then we would figure out how to proceed with that. But because it's been presented several times that the transfer station and refuse and collections is the number one, you know, impact factor. We want to make sure that we are on the same page as a board as far as how big we're making the scope of that discussion. All right. So Manager Ewald is going to walk us through this.
What is service level? We've been talking about that a lot in the scope of our meetings. And so this slide is, I apologize if you're already thinking about all of these different elements. But in case you're not, I just wanted to reiterate what gets included when at least you hear me talk about service level. It involves weighing cost, capacity of equipment, people, location and space. It includes the community's expectation, policies either provided by the board or impacted by the board. And then the environmental, all of those things put together equal service level. So changes to service level can be positive and negative. They're felt in different ways based upon the magnitude of the change. But our, as we know from the discussion with Public Works, that our facility and site options can impact service level. And for us specifically, that component is the transfer station. And the services, the core services are provided with that, namely refuse, collection, yard waste and leafs. So let's recap where we've been before. In 2020, the NOVAC group did an analysis, organizational analysis on the Public Works Department. And the utilities, they outlined within the scope of their study what our core services are in that report. And based in our prior discussions, we know that Shoreton, Whitefish Bay utilize the transfer station to offload refuse and yard waste. The transfer station materials are collected by a contractor and hauled away to a landfill or a composting facility. Collections, refuse and yard waste is the most significant factor as determined by the Bariantos Design Group because of the impact on cost, equipment, space and employees in designing a future public works facility site. Also in the NOVAC report, and I'm not going to belabor these two slides, but in the NOVAC report, they said, hey, village, you know, when you look at your core services, there are different ways to take a look at them. You can have alternative, sort of alternative service delivery, you know, which is primarily, let's contract out that service. Let's not do that in-house anymore. Those have different impacts based upon the level of service and availability of other people to provide the service. The same level of service may not be guaranteed to what our customers are used to. We may possibly pay more or less depending on what it is. That also impacts equipment needed and personnel. Our responsiveness, vendor, vendor interest is sometimes unknown. That's a good one to think about when we talk about our current service level for leaf collection. Could require us to change some policy and we may or may not meet customer expectation. Another alternative service delivery method is shared services or working within that environment, collaboration, which is primarily information sharing or consolidation, which would require policy change on behalf of this board and also the other municipality or municipalities that you would be consolidating with. Examples of these, we have a jointly owned transfer station by agreement with the Village of Whitefish Bay. We previously had a jointly owned street super that we have moved away from because of the levels of service and time availability of that equipment to be able to perform those operations in both of our municipalities and still meet the expectations of requirements of our MS4 permit. We're not, we don't know of any interest from any other municipalities at this time to, to look at Public Works Services. Doesn't mean that there can't be in the future. What we do know is that that doesn't stop the deterioration on the current site. And so service level would need to be defined in any different type of agreement, which may be a more lengthy process to come to from a consolidation standpoint with another municipality. So the NOVAC study findings recommended, this is just meant to be a snapshot of the recommendations of which were 22. We've already started work on some of their recommendations because as you get a study, you take one piece at a time and continue to work through it. Their top recommendation was develop a plan for replacing the existing DPW facility to improve efficiency and safety. So again, refocusing again, the Bariantos Needs Assessment found that the refuse and yard waste collection required review for purposes of reviewing a future public works facility. And that is due to the square footage required and the space required for a transfer station. Change in transfer station access could result in any of the following. Changes to our refuse collection schedules, reduce yard waste collection frequency, elimination of special collection service or outsourcing of that item, elimination of curbside brush collection or baked leaf collection only. So for tonight, we have some questions for the village board. Given the data, the transfer station is the only service to consider related to a future public works facility planning process. We've had some discussion at our past meeting that has raised questions about the importance of reviewing all service delivery methods before proceeding with site planning. So one of the things that we'd like to get to tonight or like some direction on so that I know how to proceed with, with work on this project is, does the village board wish to pursue and review all service delivery options now? Even if they don't impact the site options? And I guess I, I ask this question through the lens of, you know, I'm going to go back to, you know, these recommendations from NOVAC and things. It's, it's not possible to do everything at once. So we try to look at where we can start making those impacts and reviewing services. I do believe that it is important for the village to review its services. And, and I have every intention of doing that, but I can't do it all at one time. It's not feasible for me or for the other people who are working and also need to participate in that. So I would need to change course in a way that we could all, that would be palatable for going to put out every service on the table right now to evaluate. That being said, the project and how this kind of came to be is the fact that we're looking at a future facility. So from a focused perspective, right now Bariantos has said it's the transfer station and these core services. I apologize, got to get back to that slide.
And the reason why we're looking at the site facility is it's tied, it really came out as the primary, the most important recommendation of the NOVAC study was, hey, you've got this site that really isn't working and meeting your needs. And then with the UWM study, we all agreed that, yeah, we need to move ahead on this. We need to look at it. We need to, we can't remodel. We need to rebuild. And so that's starting this process. So I'd like to hear from the board, given what we know and that the data is is asking us to look at transfer station and make a decision about that. Is it the will of the board to go to proceed in a different manner? Yes.
I guess I kind of have trouble with the model that we should build a $10 million public works facility and then go back over services and see. I feel like it would be not fulfilling my fiduciary responsibility. Build a $10 million facility and then say, okay, now we're going to look at services. I mean, I realize this is hard gritty work, but it seems like we should do, we should look at it. It seems like, you know, I've heard a lot about how the board has continually punted, sent, kicked the can down the road. And I'm like, I'm ready to look at services, you know, I don't want another board to have to do it. And I would like to point out in the NOVAC study, under number 10, recommendation number 10, which was not highlighted, they chose something else to highlight. It is important for both communities, referring to Whitefish Bay and Shorewood and the transfer station, review transfer station operations to ensure allocate, appropriate allocation of costs and to maximize efficiency. It is also important for both communities to consider whether the service could be provided more effectively by an outside contractor. If the responsibility of owning and maintaining a transfer station was contracted out, the village would no longer be required to devote staff time or resources to equipment maintenance and would have additional capacity for other programming. Furthermore, contracting out the service would allow for the relocation of the transfer station from DPW to additional, which doesn't relevant if we're moving it anyway. But it clearly says here that we're supposed to do an RFP. It recommends that two villages collaborate on an RFP to outsource this. And I just wonder why we haven't done. It recommends that two villages collaborate on an RFP to outsource this. And I just wonder why we haven't done.
Do you want to answer? If you're going to speak though, can you come to them? Okay. Feel like the microphone please tonight.
I can perhaps not completely answer that question, but provide some information. When the village did the last request for proposals for collection services, where we actually compared the idea that all of the collection services might be outsourced versus keeping them in-house in our current.
That was 2018, right?
I believe, yes.
And that was in our packet a few, when you did the contractor presentation?
Correct. At that point, we had discussions with the contractors that had expressed interest in responding to that request. And did explore with them the option of allowing their use of our transfer station. If they were going to take over all of the curbside collection services. So rather than Shorewood do the collection, use the transfer station, transfer station hauls it away. There was a thinking at the time that the, those vendors, those companies might see the use of our transfer station as a cost-saving measure for them or as beneficial to their business plan and operation because it would allow them to use it, to experience the efficiencies that we do by having a transfer station close. To the one, they all expressed that they had no interest in utilizing or operating that transfer station. So that, just some background, some context there.
And so that was 2018?
That was. Thank you.
And so based upon that response, we decided not to go out for an RFP. Well, and we've also bought a new compactor in that, didn't we?
We have replaced one of the contractor, compactors, correct. And we have not done a proposal for operation of the transfer station. I'm not certain if this was a bit of a disconnect with NOVAC. Can't speak to that, but I can say that personally, I see very little value in paying a third party to operate the transfer station if we in Whitefish Bay are loading materials there. We do that work ourselves now at no additional cost to the village. It is part of the work that we're responsible for on a daily basis. If we were to request a third party to operate that, that would be additional costs, additional monetary costs to the village with, with no real cost savings in terms of actual dollars.
Just pointing out what the study says, this is what the consultant said, they recommended we do it. So it, it seems to me that we're cherry picking a little bit here.
Okay. Trustee Kudo.
Just a point of clarification, some clarification. So when you say that there would be no, no savings in real dollars, right? Are you, are you just assuming, are you, explain that to me if you could. I don't want to put any words in your mouth.
Sure. So a lot of times when we talk about providing services differently or doing things differently, one of the, you know, one of the top questions, or at least the top questions in terms of how quickly they're asked is, you know, of staff is, how does that impact your budget? What kind of dollars are you saving? In this particular case, we would be expending additional dollars to operate, to have a third party operate the transfer station, to manage the trailers, to do the weighing, all of that. It would not eliminate a position. We don't have someone whose entire and sole responsibility on a day-to-day basis is that. That work is spread over all of the route collectors who utilize the station and also our administrative assistant who basically does that management function. So we would be adding costs for a third party to do that operation. We would free up time for all of the existing Shorewood Route Collectors and Whitefish Bay Route Collectors. But it would not allow us to offset that additional cost in any way through reduction of staffing. Which is typically what we look at when we're looking at outsourcing activities.
I guess one of the concerns I have is we keep hearing that our staff is overworked. And I'm like, let's get rid of the transfer station that would give our staff more time to do something. If we don't have a transfer station, do we still need a scale?
No.
Is that a significant, what's a scale cost? Maintenance has got to be.
If you're going to.
Whoever can answer it.
Yeah, it's not a significant cost in terms of our operations. It's a one-time capital cost with an annual license fee that we paid to the state weights and measures division. We do have some maintenance on it. It is not, it is not significant in terms of a budget impact for discontinuing its use or removing it.
And then as a capital cost in this whole project, how much is?
The last time we put one in, well, so the last time we replaced the components of the scale, it was well under $100,000.
So a new one could be 200?
I doubt.
I think the reference point she knows, she provided was the, what she knows of the last replacement.
Mr. Bariantos?
That is going to depend, that's like asking how much is a car. It's going to depend on where it's sited, what type of scale it is, what it's used for, its weight.
Understood.
Yeah, I exactly agree with that comment Leanne made. For large vehicles, they're around 120,000.
And that's the kind we'd need for what we, for our uses. Because that narrows it down, right? We know the trucks that are going to use that scale. So given that.
I'd stay in that range, yes.
200.
I had to see if that includes install conduits for wiring and signage. So I just, I believe that's just the unit brought on site.
Good, thank you.
Okay, trustee Ursink.
Yeah, you know, I mean, just, I mean, I spent a lot of time thinking about a transfer station and, you know, all of the stuff that happens at DPW. And I feel like doing the research and looking at where the next transfer station is, where our employees would have to go to get rid of the trash. I kind of feel like we're, we're in a really great position. We have a really, really fantastic tool. And I think over the course of time, I think that having that transfer station, this equipment saves us a lot of money. And from an environmental perspective, we're not driving trucks 20 miles away to go to another transfer station. You know, so I would love to see, you know, I know it's hard to put apples and oranges. It would be apples and oranges, but the cost savings to getting rid of a transfer station, contracting that out as opposed to having our own, having our own transfer station partnering with Whitefish Bay. And, you know, if we move this to Milwaukee and we have a transfer station in Milwaukee, seeing that their next closest transfer station is probably a substantial, you know, distance away. Maybe they'd be interested in also working with us on a transfer station. Right now, our residents are very happy with their services. I have not heard a lot of positive feedback on waste management. And if we start contracting these things out, we lose complete control over this. And, and prices can fluctuate money, you know, and it's not guaranteed that we're, you know, I think it's not guaranteed that we're going to be able to find, keep the prices at the, you know, the levels that we want because we start to lose control and we have to start contracting it out. So we have these sort of maybe minimal savings by getting rid of one thing. But then we also create all these other problems and, and all these other issues, especially with equipment. If we're driving our garbage trucks, you know, 10, 15 miles away to another station every day and our, and our employees are about, you know, spending two hours, three hours out on these routes and then coming back. I mean, there's, there's a lot, that's an expense right there. So I think, you know, for me, I feel like, you know, we're in a really great situation with the equipment we have. I guess my one question for Leanne is, would we be able to keep a lot of this equipment if we did and move this to a new site? Like the transfer station, would we be able to keep that equipment or do we have to buy new equipment, a new scale, new transfer station, all of that?
It's an at-grade scale, so that, that would not be movable or reusable. I think, given the choice, most people don't use at-grade scales. We have one simply because we have very limited space and we don't have the real estate, so to speak, to install a, an above grade scale, which is typically what you see and what most people want. Because the, the maintenance costs are significantly less and the units themselves are less. I forgot the first part of the question.
Compactor or transfer station?
The compacting, the compactor units themselves, I believe, I'm not the expert on that. But my understanding is that they, they could be moved to a new site and used for the remainder of their useful life. Whether that would be the most, make the most economic sense to do so, I think is a different question. But, but my understanding of how those units work, it could be relocated.
And my last question for you, do you feel like it's reasonable or conceivable that Milwaukee could have a seat at the table if we were in that area?
Anything is possible. I, I think that what I have seen of the potential conceptual layouts is they're probably not sized to a facility or an operation that would extend beyond the size of Shorewood and Whitefish Bay. Certainly possible. But if you're talking about adding a significant number of trucks, I think you're, you're looking at more space and a bit different design.
Yeah, let's, you know, River West, for instance, let's say we just service that River West neighborhood. You know, with that, you know, I guess I'm going a little far, but I.
Thank you. That's good self-awareness. I appreciate that.
Just interested.
Yeah, it is interesting.
So.
I think I'd like to stay, I'll, I'll go to you, but I wanted to, if you could go back to the slide of the question that we're on. So to go up a level higher, a higher level here. What we're, what I'm asking the board is, do you feel like you need? Trustee Stokebrand is feeling like, I can't think about constructing a new site until I know what services we're providing at what level. And what are alternative service delivery options to what we have now? Because that might impact cost or site needs. So I want to know if the rest of the board is feeling that way because that's a very different process than the one that we were anticipating because we've, we've done the assessment and the facility is greatly impacted by collections and transfer station. So I just want to remind you, like, that's the level that we're at right now because we're going to get into that lower, lower level. And trustee Kudo had his hand up first, but then trustee Arndorfer.
I guess, I guess I would say two things. One, does the board, even if they don't impact the site options? I guess I have a hard time. I don't agree with the premise of the question, really. I mean, I don't know what delivery, what service options do or do not impact the site options other than the transfer station.
Right, because that, we.
That's it.
That was the first step of evaluation they did.
So, I mean, where I land on this is, you know, clearly the board, there's a, there's a feeling on the board to have the conversation about the different potential sites and what might work versus what might not work. I don't know, and I, I totally believe Leanne when she says, and she had these conversations five years ago, that there were no takers and just there wasn't interest there. What I, I would like, and I agree with trustee Ursink on this, I would like an updated cost of what it costs for us to run these services with our staff in-house, you know, as we do now. And even if we were to move over to River West versus what it would cost to contract out. I, you know, anecdotally, I think I agree with you that folks love the level of service that we have. And there have been some hiccups obviously with waste management. I don't know that I would be willing to spend money on that anecdotal evidence. You know, like, I don't want to make a decision off of conversations I've had with just people in the village, but I understand where you're coming from. You know, I, do we need to stop everything to have a discussion about our service levels? No, I don't think so, but I, you know, I'm also not sold that we need the transfer station. I'm not in the same boat as trustee Ursink. You know, I think that when you look at other municipalities, they have figured out ways to do this without transfer station. And they have figured out ways, I assume, to do this in a way that is financially responsible to their communities. And, you know, again, to go off of some conversations from five years ago, although I believe they are 100% accurate, I don't think necessarily reflect where we are right now. And if we're going to do this whole hog analysis of what we have in the village, what services we're providing, where we want to do it, do we want a transfer station? Do we not want a transfer station? I think now would be the time to, to at least get dollars on a page and sell spreadsheet to say, sure, all these route drivers are not having to do their routes anymore. So do they have time to do other things? Do they have time to work on that stuff? Do they not? Are they so overworked that even though we've gotten rid of these routes, they are still jam-packed? So, and if that's not the case, then I have a hard time believing that we wouldn't potentially save on FTEs because we got rid of the routes, right? I don't think it's necessarily an even sort of split here. And so, you know, there's just a lot of questions that I have. But as far as this, yes, I would like to review all services, but no, I don't think that should stop us.
Okay. And we are going to, the next slide is the transfer station question, so you'll get to do that. So it was trustee Arndorfer, then it's trustee Moore Baldoff, and then I do, I'll.
No, I could, I'm sorry. I just want to clarify something that perhaps was my misunderstanding. When there's a conversation about contracting the operation of the transfer station, which I answered earlier, to me, that means the transfer station is there and someone else is operating it.
Okay.
Well, okay, but, but, but that is what, the transfer station is still operating and you're contracting its operation. So that is completely different than eliminating the transfer station. We don't contract operation of the transfer station. We contract service that is delivered. The transfer station goes away.
But we contract, what you're saying is we contract.
Then we contract curbside collections. We do not contract the operation of the transfer station. That, that is, that's not an accurate description of what would happen. So if we go to contracting collection services, refuse, yard, refuse and yard waste, the transfer station goes away. That's a very, that's a very different question than, than what I was answering.
Okay.
So just to clarify.
I appreciate that. And if there's a huge dollar difference, then.
There is. Yes, so then that becomes different, right? So then, then we're talking about removing services from our purview and, and a different entity is delivering those services. And I would fully expect that if we are looking at that path, then, then yes, we are looking definitely at FTE reductions. But, but I do want to state that there, I am not aware of any communities that do curbside recycling or, excuse me, curbside collections without access to a transfer station. When you.
Within that community.
When you pick that material up, you have to have somewhere to take it.
Right.
Right? So you need access to a transfer.
Sure. But.
They don't pick theirs up. They contract those services.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I am aware of no communities that make their own collections and don't have a transfer station.
100% understand.
So you have to do one or the other. You contract it out or you pick it up and you have a transfer station.
Totally get it. And I think what I'm saying is I would, I would be interested to see the cost of either one of those or together as a company.
So the way to determine the cost for outsourcing is to do a proposal and get those costs from. and and get those costs from the the vendor.
Which we did in 2018.
Which we did in 2018. At that time, it's a different time now, right? But at that time, I, it was determined that we could actually deliver those costs for a lower price with a much higher level of service. The other thing that I would also ask you to always consider is that our current department size is built based on our response to winter operations. And removing three employees from that size directly impacts that level of service in addition to the level of service for collections.
Okay.
And just so you know, that 2018 outsourcing contract, that was a full board discussion. And so, and that was a board that we were ready to contract out. And it was, yeah, so that's why I haven't spent, and it was all refer, it was linked in our packet a few.
And maybe it comes back the same way. Five years later, it comes back. And it says, we can do it better for cheaper.
Right. And if that's the will of the whole board, you know, that's what I want to hear from tonight. So we have two people that are needing updates, Arndorfer and then Moore Baldoff.
On this specific question, no, I don't see the need to review all service delivery options now, even if they don't impact site options. I, I mean, I don't think the the world has changed materially since 2018 to the fact that, you know, it's a better deal to go with ways, you know, to source it out to waste management now than it would have been then. And again, just the, the potential risk to service levels and what we've seen with waste management and recycling has been consistent.
Trustee Moore Baldoff?
I concur with Jim on not needing to review everything at this point. Because I think really the the question isn't like, do we want a transfer station or not? The question is, do we want to continue doing the pickup? And to me, I say yes, because, for one, I always am in favor of keeping public employees and their jobs, and I don't want to see the department impacted. And also, the main concern is the quality of service that we're delivering. Number of people have referenced the issues with waste management. And also, I have seen in other communities have issues, like I, all over Florida where my family lives, there are people who are having major issues with trash collection once it was privatized. And, I mean, going weeks and weeks and weeks without the garbage picked up. And that is not, that is not a position I am willing to put our residents in, because we can't control that. And, you know, I, I, you know, I understand that having to have a transfer station is a big decision in terms of where we cite this facility and a number of other factors, but to me, the trade-off of having to outsource our collection is that I, that's just not something I'm willing to sacrifice, and I don't think that's what our residents would want to see.
Thank you. Jerry Lynn?
I agree very much, trustee Moore Baldoff. I think for me, I have two perspectives. First, as a resident, I really appreciate having access to the transfer station. I mean, there's, it's hard to put a price on my being able to just throw stuff in the back of my van and leave the trunk open and have less than a five-minute drive to get somewhere, and I can just, you know, throw them a $10 bill and and offload it. Second, I, you know, this fall, I was very busy. Was a little bit late on getting my leaves to the curb. That saw the truck coming down. They went past my house. I ran out there, thought, oh, well, I missed them this time. That's fine. But I continued raking, got it up. They backed up and did that. And I just, I would have a hard time thinking that somebody else who wasn't tied to the village the way our employees are, would do something like that for me. And then, you know, from the perspective of this board and my role on this board, I I certainly did not get involved in this to start privatizing public services. That's the last thing I'm interested in doing. So my position on this is I want to keep that service here in the village. That's why me and my family moved here. That's why my wife's family has lived here and owned a home here for like the past 70 years. It's a wonderful place to live, and some of the best people in this village are the people who work for us. And I'm, I am very grateful for that, and I want to keep it that way as long as I can.
I have a question.
Yes.
So if we, this is for Leanne, I think. If we did not have the transfer station, we would not, we would either not do the leaf collection or it would go to bagged only. So what would that do to us in terms of, didn't we just buy some like fancy leaf sucker-uppers? Like, what? What happens to those?
All the four-year-olds.
Let me tell them on the secondary mark.
You you are correct. If if we did not have access to, if we did not have access to a transfer station and A, either outsourced all of the collections, or B, made the decision that we would drive to someone else's transfer station. In in my opinion, either of those scenarios would require some adjustments to yard waste collection, namely, bagging of leaves would be required. And yes, at that point, then the village would would decide.
We would have redundant equipment that was expensive, I assume, and we only recently purchased.
Correct.
And a huge behavior change. All right, I'm gonna speak because I haven't spoken yet, and then we can go around another time if we need to. I also, I'm not interested in looking at any options that decrease or change service delivery significantly for the fact that I did go through the 2018 process. Also, our citizen surveys that I, we haven't done one for a couple of years, but there's always a question about service level. And it always comes back very high in support, you know, similar to what we're hearing tonight. And I also think that, because I have been in these conversations before, just understanding that, you know, one change here leads to another change here needs, it is a a complex process. And while I'm a huge change agent and I love change, I really, it doesn't stop the deterioration of our building and it's of our facility. And that is our first responsibility, I feel like, at this point. And I don't foresee, I've asked a couple of times, like, do you foresee a scenario in which we don't need a facility or we need half of a facility so we can build a $2 million one instead of a $5 million one? And that just isn't, you know, we're being presented with with the the best option to maintain service delivery. So that's what I want to focus on. And after we have that, I think down the road, you know, we will look at services and we will look at consolidation and all kinds of things. But we would still need that facility and that equipment, because we all want our snow, ours, our roads cleared. We don't want to wait for another community. We're going to start at the north, you know, you know, Silver Spring and work our way south, you know, with the same number of trucks, you know? So not to be too simplistic, but that's what that I'm not interested in in taking that on, especially because we don't have any offers on the table. So trustee Stokebrand, I mean, we do, so anyway, we're gonna close at 7:30. You've already answered this question. Do you have something different to add?
So we never found out, we were told there was a transfer station in Milwaukee. Do we know where that, if the transfer station's in River West, this whole conversation changed? Do we know where the closest transfer station is?
There are two facilities that are owned and operated by the city of Milwaukee. They're not open to the public. They would not be open to Shorewood without some level of both communities coming to an agreement. There's one on Lincoln Avenue. There's one on Industrial Road. I don't know anything.
Industrial Road generally.
Northwest.
Lake Mill Road, 76th.
I don't know, I I don't have a good understanding of their sizes or their operations. But I do know that there are two drop-off facilities located at each of those locations. From a mileage perspective, there's, they're they're different. But from a travel perspective, they are both about a 20-minute trip from Shorewood.
And then there's Tosa and Greenfield physically have transportations. We have not had any, haven't had any conversations with them, but those would be further.
That's just one last question.
If she has the floor.
One more thing. I mean, I think one of the questions that, or the concerns that trustee Kudo expressed was probably have been addressed in of the NOVAC recommendations, number nine. Under service standards, develop workload and performance data metrics and regularly report these to the village board. If we had been doing this since 2020, I feel like I would be in a much better spot to make a decision about this.
Director Bushlick?
We did have that conversation with the Public Works Committee right at, as we started working through those recommendations at that time, and and I can look and pull those notes, but the direction that I was given from then trustee Warren and the rest of the committee was that they did not wish to have any additional metrics reported beyond what was done on an annual basis.
Is there any chance we could relook at that? I mean, if we want to really look at services down the road? Yeah, my only other comment is, you know, there's, everyone talks about making Shorewood more affordable and more diverse, and one of the ways you do that is you cut costs. And I don't think you necessarily, I don't think waste management has done that bad with recycling. I don't hear that many bad comments about compost crusaders. So I guess I I'm missing some of the negative feedback.
So just to recap on this, do, it doesn't sound like the majority of the board feels a need to review all service options before considering options. So moving on to the next slide. Does the board wish to consider site options that would eliminate the transfer station? We've kind of gone back and forth, but I just want to be really clear that we've taken this one.
Yeah, I would be open to considering a site option that would eliminate the transfer station. I, I mean, I would be interested in at least exploring, you know, possibilities with the city of Milwaukee or some of the other communities mentioned, just to get an understanding of whether it's realistic or not. I mean, I think there's certainly limits on what we can do in in distances, but if there's something relatively close and we can work out something, I think it's worth at least investigating that.
Yes, trustee Ursink?
I would be a no on on looking at spaces that eliminate the transfer station. I think it's very important to ask that for our community.
Trustee Moore Baldoff, do you mind if we just go around?
Sorry, I'm seeing my carrots.
You want me to come back to you?
No, it's fine.
Okay.
I I do not want to consider site options that would eliminate the transfer station. Although I am I, and I know we've probably had this conversation before, but one question I do have is, like, what if we decide to not have a transfer station and the week we're going to privatize our collection? What does that do to Whitefish Bay? Like, where would they go?
Yeah.
So that's just, you know, like, right, like.
They don't know.
Right. So I'm just, you know, curious about any ongoing conversation with them, but ultimately, I would like us to continue the service. And I don't want to look at those options.
Trustee Kudo?
But the service doesn't require us to have a transfer station, right?
Right. So if we, so the options, if we don't have a transfer station on Morris or at an alternate site.
Right.
And we kind of go to market and find a transfer station that we drive to, say that there is an agreement out there. Then that is conceptually an option, what it looks like, what it costs. You know, we wouldn't know right away. But we do know that there would be increased time added to the collection route, which would then it would disrupt, it would, we couldn't keep the same collection route that we have now. So there would be a service level impact, like, you know, right now, we do collections three, now I'm doing your spiel because I've asked you so many times.
We're going to have so many efficiencies with our new plant.
If the transfer stations were comparable distance to what we're looking at.
But they're not.
We don't know that.
Yes, we do.
Spider space is going to have to do something.
Right, but they don't have space for a transfer station.
Have they said that they don't have space for a transfer station?
They've not offered any.
Okay, so they haven't said that they don't have space?
Yes.
So I, so.
It's a given what we know now. So that's the thing. It's a given what we know now. That's this discussion tonight. The given that we know now, which we recapped in Cal, is that what did you want to?
Oh, no, I was just gonna, if you wanted me to.
I would.
That, so that if we do not have a transfer station or ready access to one, the scenarios that I see, if we maintain our own collections, is we we drive to a a further off facility, which adds time, obviously, to the day. So A, we reduce our frequency of service, which I would never recommend we do, reduce the frequency of service on garbage collection. So we would reduce the frequency and level of service on yard waste collection. Yard waste probably would go to once every other week in season. We would have to eliminate curbside brush collection and leaves would have to be bagged. Or we maintain the level of service with the collection schedules that we currently have, and we look at adding trucks and people. Those would be the two, the two most apparent ways to address that.
So like collateral consequences, positive and negative. So does that make sense? To you?
Yeah, I mean, it makes.
So then we would need more staff and more vehicles.
For your facility.
Right?
If you chose to maintain the exact.
To maintain the service levels that we had, but not operate our own transfer station and instead go to Milwaukee's, one of those two facilities, we would either have to cut service or we would have to have more.
What if it's a palatable cut?
Well, what I think what we're saying right now is, are we or are we not willing to have a conversation about having a transfer station or sharing a transfer station with someone else, somewhere else? Is my understanding of of the question we're being asked right now. And it's, and the two sides are either, yes, I am willing to have a conversation about potentially not having a transfer station or moving it somewhere else or having some other whatever. Or no, I am not willing to have that conversation about sharing services with someone else or talking about this or whatever. And so in that scenario where it is black and white between, I'm willing to hear other options. And and in my opinion, like fulfilling my fiduciary responsibility to the village, I am a yes in having further conversations. Because it's not slowing us down, it's not costing us any money. It's just having a conversation about the transfer station.
It almost does slow it down a little bit because.
Hold on. So, yes. And at the same time, because we have talked about the transfer station and its impact, what we do know that if we consider eliminating the transfer station, really, the underlying, the next question is, so are you willing to accept a service level change? Because there is no way to eliminate the transfer station with an, you know, zero-sum game. So that's what we're, so it's not really like philosophically, are you open to a conversation? It's given what we know now. And what we know now is this is the function, this is how the transfer station relates to our current service level. Any change to that transfer station has, remember the slide of like, all these things could change?
But there is no status quo to the transfer station, because one way or the other, it's not going to be.
Right.
So it's changing regardless of what happens.
Right. So the change, if it stays on a site that we control within the radius that we're looking at, is less of an impact, and the others are more of an impact that is measurable. So if, so the point, I'm not, I don't want to discuss, I'm not debating this, I'm just saying that that's why we're asking the question. But it, your quote, your answer is, yes, I want the conversation, and that's great. So Jerry Lynn?
Nope, I think we can keep it all on one site, and that's just absolutely my preferred option.
Okay, trustee Stokebrand?
I'm into looking at options, because I think, you know, we've heard about all the efficiencies, we're going to get it with a new facility. But now suddenly, we we can't look at driving farther. We can drive farther for one thing, but we can't drive farther for another thing, and it it seems incongruous. And it seems incongruous.
Okay, I think, has everybody else? Okay, I am comfortable. Since we're being asked to can to eliminate options tonight. Let's see, does the board wish to consider site options that would eliminate? Oh, I am comfortable. No, 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 I would prefer not to eliminate the transfer station. I want it, whether it's at the current site or nearby. In the times, all the conversations that I've had and going through the information and asking the question over and over. I am comfortable at a high enough level with. To move on. All right, we are at post seven thirty.
Seven thirty four to be exact.
Okay. Motion, we couldn't, we got through all the questions.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion to adjourn, all those in favor? Yeah. All right, we are adjourned at seven thirty four. Take a bathroom break and we will start at seven forty. Yes. I'd like to call the meeting of the village board to order at seven forty one. All pre, all trustees are present and accounted for. Trustee Ursink will be joining us shortly. I'd like to welcome everyone tonight and thank you for your time, talent and patience in advance as we conduct the work of the people. Has this meeting been publicly noticed?
The meeting has been properly noticed and posted according to law.
Thank you. We are moving on to item four, special order of business. We have four items this evening. I'll try to talk slowly, trustee Ursink is joining us, but we have a quorum, we can move ahead. For a consider resolution twenty twenty three dash zero nine, a resolution awarding the sale of nine million nine hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. General obligation corporate purpose bonds series twenty twenty three A. Village manager Ewald. This is presented in our packet with a memo and a resolution. Are there any questions?
So the number in the motion is different than the number you just said.
Okay, what's the correct one? Oh, in the.
Correct, and that was clarified by Brad Elmer from Baker Tilly, who is also with us this evening. Welcome, Brad.
Yeah, good evening, everyone.
The question from trustee Stokbrand was just clarifying the motion. I believe he responded to the question earlier this afternoon.
Oh, it was just different, a different number and said a different number than in the motion.
I read it off the agenda, so. Yes, so please note, basically what I want to say is the item on the floor right now is item four A, consider resolution twenty twenty three zero nine. And it's related to the general obligation corporate purpose bonds series twenty twenty three A. When someone makes a motion, hopefully to approve, please use the amount that is written in the memo at the motion, correct? All right, so at this time I would open it up for questions. Either from the gentleman from Baker Tilly or village manager Ewald. Hearing none, I would take a motion to approve. Trustee Stokbrand.
I have a question. Is there any possibility we could use some of this money for streetlights?
I don't know if that's a question for me. I mean, there was a list of projects identified for this bond issuance. And it did include water sewer and road projects. So there is a specific list, you know, if there were other qualified projects, you potentially could use it for that. But there have been projects identified for all this, this money.
So it, was that a no?
Yeah, it's. Aren't they listing the resolution?
Yeah, I mean, you could make that decision to to spend it on another eligible project. But, you know, there are projects identified for that, that money at this time.
Right, but so I guess my question then is, would streetlights be in eligible use?
Streetlights are included, and I believe we responded to this as well. The, there would be conduit laid in conjunction with the street improvement project that would be occurring in that area.
So it could be an eligible, part of the, part of it could be an eligible streetlight use.
Well, it is because our, our project plans, when we redo a street, we do all the utilities with them. So they will, in essence, anything that's within this project plan that involves street lighting will get updated. That's our plan, that's our policy.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Brad, do you want to comment on the rate?
Yeah, sure. Just give you a quick overview of the, of the bond issuance today. And again, my name is Brad Elmer. I'm with Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors out of Madison and work with the village on financial and economic development issues, including when you issue bonds. So today you had a successful bond sale, so congratulations on that. The village received seven bids and the winning bidder was Piper Sandler with at a true interest cost of three, approximately three point seven percent. So good rate, obviously rates are up and, you know, over the last year. But in the context of that, I think you had a good competitive sale and it's a good rate and you should feel good about it. As part of the process, the village received a rating from Moody's of double A two, which is consistent with your past ratings. Rebecca did a great job of answering the rating analyst questions, describing the, some of the things going on in the village and the the finances of the village. So all in all, I think a pretty successful process and I hope everybody feels good about it. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You trustee more bald off.
I was just going to say, are we ready for a motion?
I would entertain a motion.
Okay. I move to approve resolution number twenty twenty three dash oh nine, a resolution awarding the sale of eight million nine hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. General obligation corporate purpose bonds series twenty twenty three A.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote. Trustee Kudo.
Aye.
President McCag.
Aye.
Trustee Lynn.
Aye.
Trustee Ursink.
Aye.
Trustee Arndorfer.
Aye.
Trustee more bald off.
Yes. Trustee Stokbrand.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir, for joining us this evening.
Yep, thanks, everyone.
And thank you, manager Ewald, for your service in this area. Four B, existing streetlight system presentation and review of system replacement planning study. The. Our village engineer will join us this evening.
Hello, thank you for that introduction. My name is Rick Tim. I'm with Strand Associates.
And you got to talk right into it so loud.
See if I can get this up there.
Excellent.
Here, I'll stand like that. Okay. So again, my name is Rick Tim. I'm with Strand Associates. Thank you for the introduction. So I was asked to come and give some background information on the existing lighting system and to also provide additional information on the current project that we're working on right now. So does somebody have the presentation? Okay, thank you. So you can go to the next slide right away. So just in general. Those are going up. Good icebreaker. So with the general, generally speaking, with the presentation, I'll go through just a general existing lighting infrastructural review. I'll go over some of the project background and the drivers for the project. And then I'll go over some of the existing system information, expected improvements that would be expected to be made as part of the budgetary numbers that we'll be providing. And then we'll also go over, or I'll go over the project scope and some additional next steps after the budgetary process is complete. So just in general, so everybody kind of has an idea when I'm talking about different lighting components. I thought I'd run through some of the different portions of a typical, are the typical lighting system within the village. So that people kind of know what I'm talking about when I'm, when I'm working through things. And by all means, if anybody has any questions at all, feel free to stop me and ask if for clarification or anything at all. So real quick, in general, the village has a series of lighting control cabinets scattered around different parts of the village. Wire is run from those lighting control cabinets over to the lighting system. And there's a mix of direct burial cable, which means that the wire is buried directly in the ground. That's the original installation. And then there's also wire that's in conduit or pipe going from, from location to location. How's that better? How's that? Good? Okay. And so, as I was saying, you have a couple of different types of poles. One is a direct burial pole, which gets buried directly in the ground a few feet. And the other type has a concrete base that you bolt the light pole onto. And then as we go up to the top of the pole, there's a light fixture, which is the whole housing, also called a luminaire. And then within that light fixture, you have a lamp and a ballast and things are used to produce the light. So if you want to go to the next slide. So in general, just a background of the, how we've been involved with the existing lighting system and kind of a series of events that have kind of led to creating an emphasis on paying more attention to the existing lighting system. So in general, a lot of the existing system was installed in the early seventies. A lot of the existing lighting controllers, other than a few, were still original. And so in two thousand and fifteen, the village started deciding, hey, we should replace some of these lighting control cabinets that are old. So let's kind of get started on that. And so they replaced one of the lighting controllers along Lake Drive. When that was done, it exposed a few issues. There were significant cable failures. At that time, nobody, or it wasn't necessarily understood exactly why the cable failures were occurring, but led to a significant effort to track down cable failures and replace failed cable components. Then in two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty, we were brought on to start replacing another lighting controller. Then we started kind of looking at the system a little bit, trying to understand why those cable failures were occurring. And as a result of that, we determined that there were a variety of issues going on within the system. And so we, instead of replacing control cabinet, put an infrastructure review document together to identify issues within the system and kind of talk about that, you know, we think there needs to be kind of more of a system wide approach to this so that we, we get a good system in the end. Some of the project drivers then, as a result of that, as I said, the existing system was put in in the early seventies, which means that many of the areas are about fifty years old. The typical life expectancy of electrical equipment is thirty to forty years, so it's already about ten years past that. And there are some more recent installations, all of, basically all the major thoroughfares within the village have been upgraded. Capital, Oakland and Wilson Drive, then Lake Drive is expected in two thousand and twenty five, I believe, with, with the WISDOT upgrade. Additionally, the existing system voltage is, is, it's an old antiquated voltage that it's an ungrounded system, which I'll talk about on the next slide. And it also, because of the voltage that it uses, a few different code issues kick into play that I'll talk about in a little bit. And also, I think, you know, as the cable is aging, there's more outages that people are observing. The reliability is down, there's significant maintenance to track down all these cable failures. And so as a result, you know, it seems that there's a need to do a significant cable replacement. If you want to go to the next slide. And as I alluded to, there's also code related issues, the biggest one being the fact that the system doesn't have a ground. So if there's ever a cable failure, right now what's happening is that cable failure can sit there undetected and then when it rains or whatever the case might be to create enough to cause that fault to go through, that's when you get your significant cable failures. Additionally, kind of a side effect to that is when those cable failures are occurring and not tripping anything, they're actually, the stray voltage can kind of travel through the ground and it tries to get back to its source or the lighting control panel. And without a ground, it doesn't really have a path to go back. So it just kind of finds its best way to get back. One side effect of that is any metal part or whatever that is sticking in the ground and along that pathway could potentially become energized and not trip until somebody potentially touches it. So luckily, there haven't, haven't heard of anything like that, but that is the potential with the current system.
Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
Energized, what kind of voltage would be, I mean?
So it's four hundred and eighty volts, so it would be. It could be bad, depending upon.
Beetle?
It could, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I would say, yeah, I don't, I don't know for sure what the statistics are. Yep.
We're actually, we, now is not the time for public comment, I'm sorry. We'll wait until the right time.
Oh, okay. I guess we'll address those at the end.
And typically, what we do is we, we have the information presented and then we open the questions for the trustees and then public comment. So trustee Kudo, thank you, but we'll hold questions until the end, please.
Okay.
So in addition, some other code related things, the existing lighting control cabinets, this is a picture on the top right of the ones that are out behind the fire station here. Don't have enough electrical working clearance. So as a part of any upgrade, we'd want to address that issue to provide proper safe clearance if you're working on that equipment energized. And then additionally, there's various pole boxes within the system that don't require any tools to open. So we'd want to replace those with something that requires an actual tool so that somebody can just come and pop them open. And then also, because of the abnormal system voltage, for a code, the light should be twenty two feet high to kind of help prevent people from being able to access them. As I'll talk about later, a proposed, or any, any solution that would be proposed would, would plan to eliminate that old, older style of voltage, so that is, won't be an issue. The existing thirteen foot pole height should be fine with, with what would be expected to be installed for the new system. And then lastly, for project drivers would be to provide energy savings and kind of green infrastructure movement and convert a lot of the existing lighting system to LED and make sure that whatever gets installed is compatible with, with an LED upgrade either now or in the future. I can go to the next slide. So just a few statistics on the existing system. There's approximately four hundred and fifty thousand feet of cable installed right now within the existing area that hasn't been upgraded yet. There's about twelve hundred to thirteen hundred streetlights, about three hundred and twenty five of those have been replaced and about sixty of those are LED with a handful of others having been converted to LED bulbs along a few of the, the main drags. There's nine of those lighting control panels and five of those nine have been replaced. But the four that are remaining have a fair amount more circuits than the, than the five that have been replaced. And in total, there's about thirty five to forty lighting circuits. And it's probably kind of hard to see, but hopefully you can see the colors just a real quick, so you can kind of see what's been upgraded, what hasn't. Basically, the green lines on Oakland and Capitol have been upgraded within the last ten to fifteen years. They're fully code compliant. As a part of the budgetary exercise, the main thing that we'd be looking to do there is to replace the bulbs that are existing with LED light bulbs for energy savings. And some of those have already been done by village staff. And then the blue lines are additional upgrades. So along Wilson Drive, there's been LED lights and new wiring installed. But at that time, a ground wire wasn't installed, so we'd have to go back through and provide a ground to provide a properly grounded system. And then a few other small components within the village have been, have had various upgrades, mostly new wiring conduit put in as what you guys were talking about as far as part of the individual streets project. So we try to reuse that infrastructure and take advantage of that. And then, as I mentioned before, up along Lake Drive is planned to be replaced as a part of Wisconsin DOT project in two thousand and twenty five. Go to the next slide. So as part of the expected improvements, we'd plan to replace those remaining four lighting, existing lighting control cabinets with new ones. we'd plan to replace those remaining four lighting, existing lighting control cabinets with new ones. As a part of, so a part of our current project is just to basically come with a high-level understanding of what's there, come up with budgetary costs to do a replacement and figure out how best to fit replacement to fall in line with what is available for funds. As a part, after that, we would then do a detailed, or a detailed design would be done to figure out exactly where to put everything and exactly how to upgrade it. And so, as a part of that, phase those quantities and locations to be determined. Additionally, we didn't, the plan would
place the wire underground. And so, we plan to replace those light poles. All the existing. With your place of wire. As part of that, ground wire would be so as part of the project that we're currently working, that it's a budgetary project, so they're bolted to an act from a code and installation standpoint. Is that just to develop quality lighting system? How cable and how and then reviewing capital drive. Oakland Avenue room. Have us full LED. And your options are great, always going to be against existing. And then we felt cost to replace the entire street. All then. Also, some third-party and then as a part of the final portion of basically I summarize all of our fine patient timeline options. Opposing budgetary numbers. That'll be top graph now. I'll that right up in April. From that, then the
Yeah, I'll open the discussion. And I just want to encourage, I want to maintain a scope of discussion tonight that relates to the information that's been presented tonight because they're going to come back with the final report. So we're not going to jump ahead to what's going to be in that final report. So questions, technical questions, clarifications related to these slides, this information we've heard tonight. Anything that doesn't pertain to that, we'll note it, but we won't spend time discussing it.
And President McCaig, just a friendly reminder, the board will go through their discussion and then we can then call upon people who may have questions to.
Yeah, and we are not slated for action tonight. This is simply a presentation. So again, this is to make sure that everybody understands what's the baseline here is. And anything that doesn't pertain to that, we will set aside and come back to it. And there is no action being taken tonight. All right, questions from the board? Trustee Learn?
I have just two questions regarding the grounding. With the lights that WISDOT are replacing, is there a way for us to know if they would be grounding those lights automatically? Is that like the code they would have to follow?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and then with the lights that you have on the map highlighted in, on the, the blue lines, you mentioned like Wilson Drive is not, not grounded. But any of the other, you know, so-called new lights that are slated to be replaced with LED bulbs? When we replace the bulbs, is that something that can then easily be grounded up to code? Or does that require another step in the process? Okay, okay, the ones that are already grounded? Be part of that? Okay. Okay, so that whole system would need to be replaced even for the newish lights like Wilson Drive? Yeah.
Have conduit installed means that a wire
Okay, okay.
And then any that aren't highlighted.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Arndt.
Get some hot mics here.
Sorry, I had two quick questions. One, what's the useful life of a, you know, modern street, you know, the post these days? And, you know, when we, to me, the village needs to come back and replace this, you know, infrastructure again in 30, 40 years, are we making, it's, are the changes we're doing now going to make this a simpler process? And, you know, what we're going through now? Or is it just another wholesale replacement?
So the first you don't know for sure what the percentage would be, but originally poles in the village are concrete. I think on kind of a what would happen, place those poles. Any question? Oh. That's good. Fire then. Putting that you can the future. A wire through it. Wire is probably provides some far as the
Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Trustee, oh, you had your hand up, but trustee bald off.
I don't really have a question, I just wanted to say thank you. This was very informative and helpful and to me underscores what a significant public safety issue this is and the need for us to move forward on it. So thank you for the information.
Just your sink.
Am I right by saying that the current system won't allow for the whole village to be unified through LED? Right? In the current setup? And I guess this may be for a question for Leanne, but is that something that, that we can look at for the future? Is that something that, that maybe through your scope of work, we can look at? Or is that not a possibility? And could you just give us a kind of a, you know, we're looking at a lot. You said for 160, what was the total number of, you know, there's 1,200, but how with the cabling, there is, how much cabling? What would be, you know, a ballpark for timeline for replacing all of this?
That's, let's pin that, yeah. Foreshadowing. I know you are always one step ahead. All right. Other trustee questions? Trustee Stokbrand?
Just kind of confused about control panels and control boxes. Because I know we have approved some, I thought they were boxes. And then we had like seven of them, control panels, and then, and the number's nine here. Am I, am I talking about, you have two different things?
So the nine would be for theirs.
I was just, I was looking at the memo and we talk about seven. We don't, we'd approved a second control cabinet near Lake Bluff out of seven, so I guess that's why I'm confused. Because these were pretty big budget items. I think we, we had budgeted 300,000 for the remaining cabinets in 2025.
Oh, okay.
So my, my guess at the discrepancy between the seven and the nine is that at certain times when we were counting that the, the pair of cabinets for Capital and the pair of cabinets for Oakland, rather than being counted as two, were counted as a single unit.
Okay. So we do have two of them done. Well, no, one, the one was supposed to be done this spring, right? Because they
So the, the Lake Bluff cabinet was actually budgeted in 2021. As Rick mentioned, as, as Strand was working on the, the plans for that, we, we we fully realized some of the issues related to the, the current system and the voltage and building that cabinet. And then we also added in some supply chain issues and the antiquated parts that are necessary to build a new cabinet to service this system. And we have not, that cabinet has not been replaced. Our last communication last week, we were told that they're still 18? A year or more out. So we've asked them to
Parts or labor or what?
We've asked them to suspend and hold work on that while we work through this because it, if, if in fact, the board does approve a new, a design and installation of a new system, and we have, we don't we would be looking at a new cabinet without those antiquated parts. And it wouldn't, in my opinion, make much sense to try and re-retrofit that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then I'm just wondering, so beginning of May, we would get the memorandum that would go over development costs and provide an implementation timeline. But then, there's a separate bullet point that says, so what, what we pay for now is, I believe it's about $30,000, gets us to the, to the beginning of May. And then it would be a new RFP or begin replacement program, design and construction.
Correct.
And so, not to put you on the spot, but is that something that your firm could do, or would we look somewhere else?
No, we could do it.
Okay, but we'd probably have, go out for an R, I don't, well, anyway.
You could ask the village manager for procurement policy.
Right, so it would likely take you over the threshold, the dollar amount? So typically, we would go out for RFP. However, the board always has the discretion of whether they desire to use the village engineer for those purposes.
And can you explain a little bit about the upgrading? I mean, like Whitefish Bay, I'm under the impression that they, they moved all their lights to LED. Was that just like a temporary, like a, the quick fix that won't work very well for us?
Sorry, could you repeat that? I was
Tell me a little bit about the, the third-party LED lease agreement. Is that, do you happen to know, is that what Whitefish Bay did?
Yeah, so I spoke with Whitefish Bay before the meeting because I figured people would be interested in knowing about what they did. So first off, their system is a little bit different. So your system is a 480-volt phase to ground, which is what kicks in the different code requirements that, and also, you have very low wattage lamps and 480 volt is pretty high. And so, when you couple those two things together, we haven't found products that are really compatible with that. And Whitefish Bay, they use 277 volt power. And so, they're able to find those light fixture or light bulbs that, that are compatible at that voltage with the lower wattages. So that is the, the big difference between Whitefish Bay and kind of what Shortwood has right now.
And then it just looks like Capital and Oakland would be a pretty fast fix.
Yeah.
That's not where we're having big outages.
Yeah, I think when I spoke with the, the electrician at Whitefish Bay, they were able to replace those light bulbs within a few months from start to finish throughout the entire village. So Oakland and Capital, you know, if you were to hire a contractor or go through that third-party agency, whoever it might be, that lamping replacement is, you know, fairly, I don't want to say trivial, but fairly quick installation and doesn't really require outages or anything.
It'd be something our public works would manage. Just manage a contract that the third party would take care of. So we hire someone to, we do, we'd like lease out our light fixture maintenance to this.
Yeah, I think, I mean, that could be for discussion later, but
Yeah, we'll be getting more information about contracting and third-party.
It's, it's a bullet point, so I thought it was relevant.
Well, it's coming back in the report.
Yeah.
So we'll get more information.
So your report in May will have numbers with dollar sign.
The development plan will have numbers and dollars, yep. As far as the third-party lease, we're really just pretty much, we have a certain amount of time budgeted and we're just providing assistance as needed. So if there's questions on what you have received from a 30-part, third-party lease company, we're just providing that review to find the questions to ask and kind of understand what the, you know, how much they're charging and what they're doing and whether it will actually work or not. And kind of compare it against, you know, if, if the actual system were to
And so, that's a competitive market. There are vendors in the marketplace that do this competitively for a municipal.
I have not personally worked with any of these third-party lease companies. I have not personally worked with any of these third party lease companies, so I, I don't know. I, I think you guys have only really received contact from one company and I believe it was the one that did Whitefish Bay. So, I'm, I'm not aware of other companies that, you know, if you wanted to reach out to someone to get competitive or whatever, I, I'm not certain on that.
Thank you very much. It's great to see this, the information because obviously public safety is critical, but I'm also very interested to see the energy savings.
Great. Trustee Kudo.
Can I ask the village attorney question regarding liability? Based on the information that we received this evening?
You can ask questions, certainly. I will give you a forewarning that if we're talking about potential future litigation, we should do that in closed session. But if you, if you want to ask your question, I can tell you, I guess I can tell you if I can answer it right now.
Okay, so generally, not including our specific situation, generally speaking, what is, what would be hypothetically speaking, what would the liability of a municipality be? If, on, if there was a a short in one of the circuits? Injury or bodily harm to someone?
You know, my answer is going to be it depends on a lot of things.
I'm sure it will.
But hypothetically, if that were the case, and hypothetically, if the village knew and hypothetically sat on it, there is potential for liability. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, trustee, your sync?
I know it's coming back to me for a second.
I know.
I apologize. I'm going to make it quick.
Thank you.
You know, knowing that there is one of these boxes at Lake Bluff, should we be concerned that with the children playing, you know, in that playground or playing in those fields, you know, throughout the school year, throughout the summer, is that a concern with potential?
I don't, I personally can't really comment on exactly how, you know, where the potential is greater than another spot. I don't know that. You know, that's the unpredictability of it, I guess a little bit is.
Yeah, I think speculation isn't really a good use of our time now, but I think certainly if we have questions, the village attorney can provide guidance and, and we certainly can bring it forward. So, very understandable that there would be these questions, but speculation, I don't think is part of our job tonight. All right, at this time, I'd like to ask if there are any questions from the public related to the information presented? And anything that's not related, we can note for the future and respond in a different way.
Yes, just for everyone in the galley, and this is why we have a specific time for public comment, to make sure we're complying with open meeting laws. Trustee Lynn has been really generous with his microphone, so please, if you're going to use it, make sure you use the microphone or be sure to use the one on the stand there and get really close to it, because we opened it up on Teams, all the people on Teams need to be able to hear what's happening. So, if you're going to come up and make a comment, please just be conscientious of that.
Thanks for the reminder. All right, if anybody has a question, they can come to the mic and share their name and address. I see some hands online. Are there any people here in person? Okay, I don't see anyone moving, so we can, somebody BJ? And if you can turn your camera on, that would be great.
Hi, everybody. I actually, I had put my hand up. This is Becky Dubin Jenkins. By the way, good evening, friends and neighbors. Becky Dubin Jenkins, 4500 Wildwood Avenue. I had actually put my hand up earlier. We were having trouble hearing audio, so I wanted to flag that. I do not have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Oh, sorry for that. Okay.
Not a problem.
Okay. MM. Okay, I think that's, is that everyone? All right, if there are no further questions? Okay.
Yeah, I'm not seeing him on the screen anymore.
He's far left.
Oh, he's far left. Okay.
Oh. Matt McGovern, could you unmute yourself, please? If you're talking, we can't hear you.
Just would it help if I hit disabled mic? No. Oh, you did. Okay.
Mr. McGovern, can you unmute your microphone? All right, I would invite you to submit your question online and we will respond to it that way and we can put it in a future packet when the report comes back. All right, thank you very much for being here this evening and we look forward to the conclusion of your work.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we can move on to 4C, history of the Public Works Facility with Karen DeHartog, the, from the Shorewood Historical Society. Thank you very much for being here and thank you for your patience, Karen. Oh, well, I'll tell you, trustee Lynn's mic works a lot better than that one.
Well, thank you so much for having me tonight. I know that the, the DPW is a huge and long-term project conversation that you people are going to be having, but I'm here tonight just to give you a little bit of the history of our DPW to kind of put things in a community context, I guess you'd say. Community-wide garbage pickup started in 1916.
Whoa.
Which was at a time when we had less than 2,000 people. It was hauled to a swampy area west of Whitefish Bay, which probably was near the river. And then by the mid 20s, concerns about pollution, the distance of the haul and the increasing amount of garbage due to population explosion caused the village to look for other solutions. And I will recognize too, they were not only hauling garbage up there, they were also hauling clinkers, which most people don't know what clinkers are, but clinkers are the refuse that you have after you had a coal burning furnace. So, the garbage people were picking up both the garbage and the clinkers to haul to this place up west of Whitefish Bay. So, in 1927, when our population had reached almost 10,000 or perhaps even a little more, the current DPW site was purchased from Drucker and Sons, which was a building supply business that was located on then called Atwater Road, today Capitol Drive, right next to the train station, which means it was about in the area of Culvers. Drucker and Sons was a large building facilitator. They stored lime and cement and oil and all kinds of things that were needed in the building of the community and probably did very well, but they needed to be next to that train station and consequently owned the land as far south as what is now DPW. Once the land was acquired, Colonel Henry Hingles, who by the way designed our, our fire department next door, was brought on to design the incinerator and an adjacent garage for vehicle storage. He was also the architect, as I said, of the safety building and that was completed at about the same time, 1928. Contracts were awarded to build the incinerator and the attached garage after the size of the garage was decreased to be in line with a $40,000 bond. Hingles decorative designs were completed by skilled bricklayers using red and white brick. The incinerator included two 15-ton furnaces. And the picture here is of just those two buildings, probably when they are practically brand new. Colonel Hingles' work is, is very obvious to those who've seen much of it. And if you compare these buildings to the one next door, some of the decorative turf type things that are on top, a lot of the decorative design with the brick. He was an interesting gentleman who was the architect for the Wisconsin National Guard and did a lot of armory, some of the things, the one on Richard Street was also done by him and fire stations. And he lived here in Shorewood, so he was a big help to this community as well. That picture, as I said, is probably what was brand new, the next one, next picture. This one I put in just to give you an idea of what was going on around it at the time it was built. The house of this is be taken from Morris, looking north past the entrance to DPW. The last houses of that whole long row of duplexes were just being built, so this is probably in the early 20s. Next. This one's looking the other directions, up the hill to the schoolhouse, which is up there on the hill, on the, on the right. I would guess this one is about 1930 or 31 because there's another building there on the hill, which is probably what we call the North Gym and that was built in 1930. Those were the, some of the first vehicles that were used. They had been stored in a garage here next to the village hall until DPW was built. Obviously, they had a lot of work yet to do on the landscaping at that point. The next one. This one just gives you kind of the overall picture of, of the equipment, the location and what they were working with in the early 1930s. The next one? Yes, please. Okay. Next picture is of the garbage getters. We got to get the garbage getters. Hey there. Garbage was collected in what they called garbage getters, which is, I don't know, guess was creative. They were these little wagons that were pulled by tractors or other trucks through the village and apparently they made a great deal of noise rumbling over the streets and the alleys because everybody would know they were coming. But they had a distinct advantage in that those are kind of like a canvas cover over the top. So, when the garbage collection unit was full, they would take it to the incinerator and drive off the little hill and they could dump the whole wagon sideways so that would fall into the incinerator. And the next picture? This is filling up the garbage getters and they look happy about it. These incinerators were finally totally operational by mid 1928. There had been some concern among the neighbors that the burning garbage would smell, but it did not turn out to be the case because of the extreme heat from the fires. It not only burned everything up, but it eliminated the odor as well. And as I said, they were fully operational by mid 1928. By 1931, we had a population of over 13,000 and an average of 14 tons of garbage and combustibles, paper, cardboard, that sort of thing, were burned per day requiring an average of 44 pounds of coal per ton of garbage. One of the reasons DPW was placed where it is is because it was on the train line, so the train could bring in the coal and salt and gravel and everything else that they needed and went off on a little spur right there by DPW. It took more than 44 tons, pounds of coal during the summer when the garbage was wetter. And there was a nice little article in the paper about the fact they really wanted people to wrap the watermelon rinds because they were so wet, they weren't burning well. The incinerator burned an average of 312 tons per month and soot from the furnace averaged about two tons per year and was used by the forestry department as fertilizer. Then we move on to the 1930s. Next slide, please. In 1935, plans were made to build the equipment storage garage seen here. Also a warehouse for sanding gravel and the office addition that we know of today next to the garage, front garage. They were constructed in the same style as the incinerator with federal assistance through the Works Progress Administration. The back note was on the back of this particular picture I thought was of interest and like to read it to you. It said, "The east wall of this building, which is the equipment storage building, acts as a retaining wall to protect the adjoining property. The building is a brick and concrete construction with steel, trussed roof. Finished in June 30 of 1936, cost approximately $42,000, of which the government paid 89%. Furnished 36,500 man-hours of work. There were as many as 1,200 people working through the WPA in Shorewood at any given time during those three or four or five years that they were working here, very often working two-week shifts so that everybody would get at least a partial salary." And one other thing about, oh, let's, let's just take a look, go to the next slide, please. This is the finished equipment storage building, and if it looks different than it does today, it's because there was a fire in 1992 and the roof had to be replaced and they did not use the curved roof. They went for a regular peaked roof when they replaced it. The next one? Original sand and gravel storage in the, or mid 1930s. And next? And the office construction that was put on, attached to the garage. A few years ago, a woman named Sonia Ivanovich, who was a very revered teacher at the high school and president of our historical society, did a great deal of research on the WPA and its effect on Shorewood. And from a speech she gave, I thought the following information was most interesting. She said, "Shorewood never hesitated to take advantage of funds available to improve the community and the people to work. It also had the money to contribute to the project. A $60,000 bond issued voted by citizens in 1934 eventually brought 1,400,000 in federal grants. By 1939, a total of $2,650,000 had been spent on projects within this village through the WPA. And we just tried to round those numbers up to today's figures and it comes up somewhere about $59 million. A great deal of money at a time with the budget for the village was somewhere between 300 and 400,000 per year. We were great, great recipients of the, what, WPA and its fundings from the federal government. And it was not only these buildings. It was the auditorium at the high school, it was Hubbard Lodge and all of the other ones at the park. It was paint, it was roadwork, it was sewer work. It was amazing and we were in the right place, ready to go at that time to make very good use of that money. And they wrote us a really nice history book, which is the basis for a lot of what I'm telling you. By 1958, the plans adopted to build a much larger incinerator at the north end of the lot with larger stack and it would burn 60 to 70 tons in 24 hours. This was in 1958. That is the current compactor, which I believe you call a transfer station. I think it's the same thing. In 1972, solid waste were hauled by, we quit using our incinerators and solid waste were hauled by United Waste Systems to an incinerator on Villard and Green Bay run by Waste Management Company. Plans were made to change the new incinerator into a compactor or the transfer station. And then finally, in 2008, the office and the garage building were designated landmarks by Milwaukee County, which is an honorary award only. It does not have any teeth in it in terms of saving the buildings. And of interest, at that time, the village board asked that the other two buildings down there not be included in the honor because they were in such poor shape that they didn't think they'd be up much longer, but they did promise at that time to use the bricks from those buildings for other projects. Which is noteworthy because a lot of the brick that is in Hubbard Lodge started out as part of the armory that was on the corner of Oakland and Capitol. And that was part of our payment in the WPA system was the bricks. But that, that's a very quick and, and not clean, dirty, whatever history of the DPW. If you have any particular questions, I'd gladly answer them. If anybody would like a copy of this, I have numerous ones with me, so.
Trustee Kudo? Oh, okay, copy. Yeah, that was really interesting, Karen. Really appreciate that.
Yes. Okay.
All right, any questions for Karen? Trustee, your sync?
Thank you, by the way. That was fantastic. You know, I could probably sit and watch that for another 20 minutes. Can you talk a little about the office addition? Was that, you know, same architect? I have feelings. It was the same architect that did that. That's great. That's fantastic.
He was. He was definitely around through the 1930s. I can't exactly remember how long he lived beyond that, but he, he lived here in Shorewood. He lived up in the corner of Kensington and Frederick.
Are there any big, other big sort of projects that he's done in, in the area, maybe not Shorewood, but Milwaukee?
The ones that are left, the Richard Street Armory. And there is a fire station done in Capitol and it's maybe between 25th and 35th Street. There's a one on the south side of the road. I know there's another armory in Janesville that's still standing, but a lot of his things have, have changed.
Well, thank you. Well, thank you.
Any final questions? All right, any from the audience? All right, I'm not seeing any hands. All right, thank you, Karen.
You're welcome. And I just let you say, if there are other questions that come up in the course of this long and lengthy process, particularly things where we can be looking back through our old newspapers, which are just a goal of mine of information, don't hesitate to ask.
Oh, thank you. All right, so at this time, we will move on to the final special order of business this evening for de-consider public works sites for conceptual design. I will ask, does anyone need a bio break? I mean, you just had one two hours ago, okay? An hour ago. All right, thank you. So we'll let the team take their places. So this item before us this evening, what page is the... Does this start on? Mine's not clicking. Okay, so on sixty-eight, it starts with some materials. There's one-page summary for each option. I'm anticipating that everybody was able to go through those. And then it moves into the community workshop feedback, the site selection criteria, and some ranking information. And then that's followed by a PowerPoint. So... I know, but just, I'm anticipating that everybody read the things up to the PowerPoint. And now we'll hand it over to Norman to run through this PowerPoint. I just had to refresh my memory on how much information was in there.
This one, okay. Wasn't me all the time then, right? Okay. All right, good evening again, everyone. And we're going to go through the workshop and the feedback we received from that. And I believe it was our second one, and overall, it was well-attended, and we had good participation. We walked through the different sites. Be very good input from the members that were there and good observations as well. And following that, we received many email comments and leading up to our report on that. So where we are on this today is we're at the board meeting, and this is now our third board meeting in which we are going to present to you our analysis on the sites and also then include with our site selection matrix. So I'm actually going to have Josh come up here, too. We're going to have Josh talk about the workshop. Talked about the schedule.
Josh, you're going to need to talk right into the...
Sounds good. So the workshop went really well. We went through all of our basic concept designs and options. We discussed things like what would happen with existing use, constriction factors of all the sites, the previous owners of the sites we're looking at, environmental concerns, grading, acreage, and current zoning. We did submit a survey for the public, and the results came in, and it was really good. We had a sixty-five percent desire to have a new, modern facility for the DPW, but also a lot of people envisioned repurposing the current site. A lot of people had good comments and I think great feedback on what the current site could have. So it was kind of like a win-win situation was majority vote. A lot of people discussed, like, on the site, it could be private, public, residential, commercial, and that it could also add to Shorewood's tax base. I'll just briefly go over the sites again because I know you guys have all seen them. This is the first one at the existing site, North Morris Boulevard. I won't make too much comments on these sites. The second one at North Holton Street. This is the third site at East Vienna Avenue. And then the final site at North Humboldt Boulevard. Now, when we go through these options, I think it would be great to have a staff perspective from planning, public works, and the village manager on all of our options. But I'll start off at least with this one. Our current site evaluation for this option 1A was to redevelop on the existing site. That would mean the demolition of all the existing buildings and that the transfer station is either moved or eliminated. I can go through the staff's perspective if... Yeah. Yeah, so from planning perspective, this is like the land use. Public works perspective, it would be eliminating many efficiencies. Doesn't address safety concerns. Public and non-public spaces, easily separated. And off-site transfer station would have to be defined. And from a manager's perspective, it would be nontaxable, so the revenue opportunity would not be here. Retaining wall would be another huge engineering effort that would have to be looked at down the line. And there would have to be modifications for refuse, yard wastes. This site looks at splitting between the existing site and North Holton Street. On the existing site, buildings that would remain would be tempered storage and the transfer station. For land use, this would have less. The existing site's going to be still used for DPW, so a lot of people's ideas would not be able to come to fruition with this. It's, as we discussed before, really inefficient to operate between two sites, and security and maintenance costs just go up with all of that. And accessibility, I know a lot of people do public drop-off during the week. That would have to be going to that still existing site, so monitoring that would be a whole effort. And lastly, like the previous site, the nontaxable revenue opportunity would not be there. This looks at staying at... Keeping the Morris site, redeveloping it, and moving the transfer station elsewhere because this existing site could still operate despite being inefficient with the yard storage. The only thing would be the transfer station, which would have to be moved. This pretty much, from a staff perspective, touches on all the points of the previous. The transfer station would be the biggest conflict in this one. It would have to be solved further down the line, and a service change would have to be another discussion point. This looks at doing either elimination or split option on North Holton Site. So this is not including the yard storage on this site or the transfer station, so that it'd have to stay at the existing site or at a completely new site. If it was at a new site, these other uses, existing site of North Morris Boulevard would be compatible for redevelopment. Having a new facility would address current inefficiencies on the current site, and it would impact collections. And it would, it's a better option than the previous ones, but having separate yard and transfer station functions is not ideal.
Let's see.
Option 2B looks at staying at North Holton Site, but proposes buying a part of the property just to the south of it. By doing this, all the functions of the DPW are able to stay on one site, which is the most optimal. And this frees up North Morris Boulevard for any potential land use or redevelopment. This addresses all the inefficiencies and current site issues, and revenue for the current site would be possible. Option 3A looks at East Vienna Avenue. Because of the existing parcel size to fit all of the DPW operations, the parcel to the northwest and southeast would also have to be purchased. By doing this, it gives us all the other benefits that the previous option just had, which would be solving all the inefficiencies with the DPW operations and bringing up the current North Morris Boulevard site for potential land use. If we were not able to purchase or talk to those owners, we could still use East Vienna Avenue as a potential site option. Things that would have to remain at the existing Morris site, as discussed previously, would have to be tempered storage, yard storage, and the transfer station. Otherwise, some of the biggest inefficiencies, as we stated in our previous split sites, having operations on two sites is not ideal, and the current North Morris site would not be redeveloped. This is the last option at North Humboldt Boulevard. With the size of this, everything is able to fit and be moved onto this new site. This frees up the North Morris site for higher land use and additional tax income. This solves all the public works inefficiencies. I think that's it for the site.
Right, so in summary, back to the site selection criteria that the board approved, we have, as consultants, applied our ranking on these criteria. And you're seeing on site one, Morris, North Morris Boulevard, then Holton, and then Vienna, and then Humboldt. And then you're seeing on the right column or the left column, you're seeing the criteria and the weighting on the upper ones have one point five, and then they drop down to one, at which we discussed in your earlier board meetings. So what I'll do is I'll look at the very bottom first, and then we can go back up. So based on the criteria, and then their weighting, and then as your consultant, the factors that we, the way we've seen this, the way we see it, and our judgment, is that the Vienna site came out on top at seventy-six point three. And then Humboldt and Holton came out, well, Holton came out at sixty-six and a half, and Humboldt at sixty-three and a half. And then the existing Morris Boulevard site came in at thirty-two. So as I said, my experience with these is one site is going to pop out very much ahead of the others. And no matter how you tweak the numbers a bit, we can go back and look at each one. There's one that stays on top. It always works out this way, and a few just really come to the bottom. And that's what we're seeing here with this site selection, with these given sites that we've looked at to date. So if the board would like me to dive into the criteria, I'm open to do that now. Again, I felt one did really, Vienna stood out so much in all the criteria that we've talked about.
Well, the next slide, oh, goes into the recommended... The next slide just summarizes the sites and how they ranked. I guess I'd like to check in with the board because I don't want to dive into detail if the board feels like they have enough information. I also don't want to limit it, of course. So is the board, do you have questions about the site selection criteria rankings?
I just, I have a general question.
Yes.
And this is, I'm just trying to remember where we are in the process. Are we just eliminating one?
Yeah, so...
Is all we need to do tonight, right?
Yeah, so we are basically, of the options, we want to, it's not just eliminating sites. It's, look at how many options are up there.
Right.
Right, so we would want to eliminate, for example, any options. For example, for the people who want a transfer station, you might say, eliminate anything that doesn't include a transfer station.
Okay.
Didn't we already vote on that tonight?
We did, but we have to go through it again just to, you know, to hear. So what I would like to hear from the board is if there are any options that you feel comfortable letting go of right now, and just where the board is, and then we can go from there. I didn't pick any, like, crazy ranking, like, everybody vote for three or whatever. We're just going to go and see if we can, if folks are ready to toss out basic where you're at. Trustee, your sync?
Yep, so outside of the conversation we've already had about the transfer station, I would be opposed to any option that would split the sites and have the site on Morris sort of unmanned. I know we talked about that in our, in the open house. If we kept one of those sites where we had tempered storage, that would be an unmanned site. So there'd be nobody on site, and it'd be basically gates locked, gates closed all day. There'd be no security guards, and there'd be a high possibility of sort of potential criminal activity down there that we wouldn't necessarily be aware of. So that potential option for me is, would be totally off the table.
Okay, does anyone, well, we could go a couple ways. You could say, if anybody agrees with that, or we could just go around. Let's just go around. Trustee Arundoff, are you ready? Would you, are there any options that you would like to eliminate?
No, I mean, I'm open. I have mine. I don't have a hard thing.
Okay, at this point, okay. Yes?
I just want to say one quick thing. I don't want the options to cloudy, cloudy the decision-making process for the sites. This study is about what sites. The options are only there to help inform us the possibilities of the sites.
Okay.
It can, and I can get caught up in this, too, with this option and this option. We tried to give you all the possible option that could work with that current site.
I see.
Yeah, so if we can eliminate a site, that's a lot more helpful than eliminating our X or Y Z for the options.
Okay, so we have four sites that include different options, right?
Yeah, and the options are just to help show all the possibilities we could do with that site.
Okay. Yes, trustee Alda?
With that in mind, that we're just eliminating, looking to eliminate a site, I would be in favor of eliminating Humboldt in consideration.
Okay.
Because I think that what we always talked about, if I... Like that, and maybe I'm misremembering this, though, but that the existing site would be one of the ones that we evaluated?
Yeah.
Right, so...
So it's up there, Morris.
And but does it have to move on to the next round?
It does not.
Oh, okay.
No, it does not have to. So for example...
I thought we made that, I thought we made that agreement a long time ago that Morris was going to move on to a conceptual stage.
So in the RFP at Phase Two, which is site evaluation, which we're doing now, it said that Beriantos would create building and yard arrangement plans for DPW functions. Up to five sites will be arranged. One of the five sites shall be the current DPW site, which is what they have provided in this presentation, is an evaluation and building layout of five sites, one of which includes the existing public works facility.
Had to get here, but it doesn't have to go forward.
Correct.
Okay.
So, but you want to eliminate Humboldt, Site Four?
Yeah, because that one is not, that one's not for sale and, right? Okay.
I would agree with that. It's a lot larger, too.
Yeah, I would agree just based on the commentary around the cost.
Okay, trustee Kudo?
I would agree to eliminate Humboldt as well and move on with it.
Yeah, I can chime in on that as well. I mean, I think it doesn't seem like it's really an option at this moment. I mean, I suppose if it were, if none of the other sites were to come back and be viable, if we get to that stage where we're looking to buy land... if we get to that stage where we're looking to buy land and nothing's available, obviously we could revisit that just as a blank slate and a potential option, but, I mean, just from the surface of the description, it just seems too expensive, too big, and not actually available, so.
Trusty Ersink.
I would like to eliminate Site Number 1, North Morris Boulevard.
Okay, anyone else? I would be comfortable with that. I mean, I, I'm not going to support any options that include split operations, and I want to keep the transfer station. So when I was thinking about options, since Morris requires split operations, I'm not, I don't see that that work, that working for us. Potentially, if we had a transfer station in the River West area, I guess that would not be a completely negative impact, but I think we'll have to do more staffing. So, anything else? Oh, trustee Lynn?
Just to add to that, I think, you know, when I started this process, I was really hoping the Morris Boulevard option would be viable, and from the beginning up to now, it's just becoming less and less viable, from everything that we've seemed to have gone through. So I would be okay moving forward fully to a singular site that's off of Morris Boulevard. I would be okay with that as well.
So a single site with all operations in one, on one? Okay. And also with the community feedback, that was overwhelmingly feeling the repurpose the current site and move operations somewhere else. So I am, yeah, I just, I feel like with how services are rated in the community and what I've heard from, as far as the logistics of operations, and the experience that the consultant has had across municipalities where they have split sites, or they have, you know, sort of backed off at the last minute and done something that's less optimal, that, you know, it isn't, the employees don't enjoy it, and, you know, part of the reason why we're doing this is to be a workplace of the future, and at the height of efficiency. So, yeah, I personally don't see how it makes sense to consider anything that would involve splitting operations. And unfortunately, Morris Boulevard does force that hand. So anyway, so are there other, so we definitely have a majority for eliminating Site Number 4. Oh, no, we have four, yeah, 1, 2, 3, 4. We have three that would be comfortable with eliminating Morris. Is there anyone else who would be comfortable for eliminating Morris for those same purposes, same reasons? Okay. So there you have it. Oh.
So I just had a clarifying question. Can you, can you speak a little bit to some of the service, potential service changes that were cited, as it would pertain to some of the River West sites?
So we're going back to the.
Yeah, to the presentation, I'm sorry.
Yeah, to the presentation, or even the written materials that were submitted prior to the.
I was just thinking of the slides, just reading the village manager and the Public Works comments.
Oh, sure.
On some of those sites.
So on Morris. Would you like me to read to you?
Services modifications, I guess, I just wanted to do a little more.
Yeah, so staff perspective, for a planning, it's status quo, you'd land use. Public Works eliminates inefficiencies, but does not address.
No, I, I meant, can you go to one of the River West lines?
Oh. So like.
The detail.
Humboldt.
Right. Okay, possible service change for refuse, yard waste, and leaf collection. So I'm just trying to get another, I mean, that, that was the village manager POV, what kind of considerations does that raise when you say service changes?
So, so that would be what I referred to earlier in the evening, where if there's no access to a transfer station, we go down one of two roads, outsource the service, or make changes to yard waste to include bagging leaves, eliminating brush, reducing frequency.
Okay.
And with contracting out, one of the things that we ran into with 2018 is because we have some driveways and we have some alleys, and alley collection is much less desirable from a business model perspective. So we would need to, we did not have a proposal that included alley service, and so we would need to, potentially, if we contracted out refuse collection, we would need to eliminate alley service. So everybody would need to bring their carts to the curb. And then there was also full automation, like, right now, we're partially automated, where our drivers will get out, if there's a parked car that's blocking access to the cart, and the arm can't get it, our, our employees will get out of the truck and move the cart. With a contracted service, there is no, they will not do that, and so we would need to look at either people having disrupted service because they put their cart in the wrong place, or we eliminate parking on trash days, which we can do, but those are, those are significant policy changes in my mind, to maintain the same level of service, but also alley, people on alleys would not be able to, they'd have to put their carts out. And in 2018, one of the reasons why we dropped, we didn't pursue it, was that the majority of the board did not feel that eliminating alley collection was going to be acceptable to our residents. So I can just share that from institutional.
You know, I, I do want to make just a slight appeal, you know, to, to the fellow trustees here that, that want to continue on with Morris. We've now heard from our residents, who have overwhelmingly said that we should be moving, maybe we could put that graphic up, but we should be moving, moving the station or moving the facility, as well as preserving the buildings. We've heard from DPW and its staff saying that this site is not useful, and it's, it's highly inefficient, and with this current plan right here, well, with that current plan, we would have to demolish the buildings that we just heard the presentation about, and the site would still be fairly inefficient and hard to operate in. You know, we've heard from our consultants, who are also saying that this is a very tough site to work in and to, to put a DPW yard in. And then, when you look at what the possibilities for this beautiful piece of land is, while preserving these buildings, you know, I think there's just so much incredible potential here. You know, this is the last three acres that we have in Shorewood, and if you asked anybody in Shorewood, if this, let's say this was open and available, and you said, hey, we could, you know, do all sorts of really great things for the community in the space, or we could put a DPW facility, I think people would probably be more into developing this space, whether it be mixed-income housing, whether it be community spaces, whether it be, you know, a pocket park, whatever the case may be. I think there is a boatload of potential with this space, and it is definitely not the Department of Public Works, and there's no way we're ever going to get there to realize that this is, this space right here is ideal for, for a Public Works location. You know, I think we have to think in the future, and we have to say to ourselves, it's inefficient now, it's going to be highly, highly inefficient in 50 years from now. This isn't the future of Shorewood. The future of Shorewood is opening up that bike path, is bringing the community down, the kids from the schools, the people from the Oaks, is bringing more residents that could potentially live in this space and go to these schools. This, this is, this is a gem right here, and in no way should we be considering this a DPW.
Yeah, I'm very open to moving away from Morris. It's a big shift, and I want to know what I'm walking away from, so that's why I do want to keep Morris on as an option, just so that, I mean, I think we owe it to the village to, you know, make them understand what it looked, you know, this is why we left, if, if that's the route we take, and not just kicking it aside at this point, I think would be a mistake. If nothing else.
Let's see, any other comments? All right, so the majority of, there's a majority to eliminate Site 4, which is really the only thing that you need us to do tonight.
We have a motion to that effect, please.
Oh, is, so we do, it is for consideration, right? Okay. I would entertain a motion to remove Site 4 from the conceptual design phase of the contract.
So did we also vote that we were against moving away from the transfer station? So does that impact?
Oh, yeah, so.
So that will impact a lot of these options as well?
Yeah, let's look at how it, we weren't given a motion, right? Because there's no memo.
Well, it was to consider Public Works sites for conceptual.
Right.
Which three sites.
Right, so we need to, we need a motion with the three sites that we would like considered. And then we are not, we could take an informal consensus, but we're not agenda to.
Okay, that's fine.
So.
Then I'll make a motion. I move to advance Site 1, 2, and 3 forward to the conceptual planning phase.
Second.
All right, motion by trustee Moore Baldoff, seconded by trustee Kudo, any discussion? Trusty Ersink.
Yeah, unfortunately, I'm going to be voting no on this, because I do still see future potential at Humboldt. I think there's still opportunities there, especially when we talk about expansion, and we don't even know, you know, if, you know, we don't know, there's a lot we don't know about the site, but there's a lot we don't know about all of these sites. So just as, you know, hypothetically speaking, I'd like to, to keep, keep Site 4 as an option, so I'll be voting no on this.
Any other discussion? Yes.
I would just like to say that, as I mentioned before, I think after tonight, when we're talking about sites, we might want to think about going into closed session, because I don't want to tip our hand at all.
Okay, we'll get direction from, because we can't, there are some times when we might want to go into closed session, but it doesn't meet the, the threshold for closed session. So we can't, we might not be able to, but we will get opinion, we'll get advice about that.
Correct, we'll give an opinion on that.
Thank you. So noted. I'll vote yes, because I respect the thoughtful discussion here, and doesn't mean that I'll vote yes in the future, but I will support my colleagues in moving forward, and I appreciate the careful consideration and all the work that's gone into getting this far. So all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries 6, 1. Consensus for the, just for the sake of moving ahead with or without the transfer, because there's some confusion around that, could we just do a, show a straw poll of interest in moving ahead without a transfer versus keeping a, who wants to keep a transfer station? Okay, so that is 1, 2, 3, 4? Okay. And who does not want to keep a transfer station, or doesn't want to be limited? Actually, yeah, let's, who wants to get rid of the transfer station?
I'm looking to options, other options.
Okay.
I just.
So that'd be no.
Same.
Okay, and trustee Kudo?
I have none. I mean, sure, I'm, I'm still open to options.
Okay. So that, can you note that in the minutes, just so that we.
Non-binding.
It is a non-binding vote, but it is just a, because it was a question in the COW, and so I just wanted to make sure that we recorded at both places. So that was a 4-3. Not a strong majority, not a landslide by any, by any means. Okay, that's all you need from us, right? All right, thank you. All right, so we are done with Special Order of Business. Okay, I forgot to ask if there was any, we didn't have any hands up, did we? I didn't miss anyone? All right. All right, is there a motion, item 5, consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Okay. Motion by trustee Kudo, seconded by trustee Ersink, any discussion? Yes, trustee Stokbrand.
I'd like to pull item B as in Betty.
All right, any others? All right, motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 5B. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Moving on to item 6, items removed from the consent agenda. 5B, consider regular village board meeting minutes, February 20, 2023, trustee Stokbrand.
Yeah, I just wanted to, there was a, a business owner who came in and talked about the event that wasn't calendared, and I just wanted to make sure, it just called it a November 22 event, and it was a World Cup event, it would read better if it had that in there, and then I think it said something later about Crowley's something, and I just wanted to insert Executive David Crowley.
Thank you. All right, motion to approve the minutes with those corrections?
Still moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, motion by trustee Stokbrand, seconded by trustee Lynn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, we are done with the consent agenda. Item 7, public hearings, we have none this evening. Item 8, citizens to be heard, this item is for matters not on the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to be heard this evening? Anyone online that would like to be heard this evening? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands, so we will move on. Item 9, new business, 9A, consider Resolution 2023-08, a resolution amending the village fee schedule for special event permits. This item came to us from the Community and Business Relations Committee with a, with the attached resolution. Trusty Kudo, is there anything you'd like to add as chair?
No, it was a, it was a great opportunity to collaborate between the village and the bid. I think in some ways, everyone left happy, in some ways, everyone left a little unhappy, so it's probably perfect, right now. Yeah, it's, it's perfect government.
I was perfectly happy, for the record.
No, I mean, I thought it went really well, it was a great conversation, it took a little bit longer. You know, I think in the end, we came to some agreements on, you know, the fact that the village has a lot of expenses when these, when these special events occur, there are expenses not only for DPW, but for the police department, but that we recognize that these events, in many ways, make the village what we are, and attract people from other communities to spend money here. You know, and so I think by going through this process, by having the, you know, Rebecca sit down with village manager, you won't sit down with the bid, and kind of, you know, explain our position, and hearing the bid's position about, you know, wanting to continue, all the wonderful things that we have going on, you know, there was a compromise made, and I think that that's what we were looking for in the beginning, and everyone walked away, I, I believe, feeling like they had skin in the game, and, and that their concerns were heard, so.
Sweet, well, I really appreciate the, oh.
Yeah, I would, I would just add that, I mean, I think we also recognize this as, you know, a first step, and something that, you know, we're going to learn, we're going to learn from, and, you know, may want to adjust how we approach it, you know, based on what we learned in this first year, but I think, you know, for the first year, I think it's a good place, so.
Yeah, I want to say thank you, because with 10 years on the board, this has been an issue that has come up, we've tried it different ways informally, and never come to a policy decision, and it leaves everybody in a bad position. So I really appreciate you taking the time to, you know, work your way through it, because it's not easy. So, and I like that, that viewpoint, is we may be back here to review it, but it's a great place to start. All right, so is there a motion to approve? All right. So is there a motion to approve?
Sure. So I move to approve resolution 2023 dash zero eight, a resolution amending the village fee schedule for special event permits.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Not this will be a roll call vote?
President McCag.
Yes.
Trustee Lynn?
Aye.
Trustee Kudo?
Aye.
Trustee Arndorfer?
Aye.
Trustee Ursink?
Yes.
Trustee Stokbrand?
Aye.
Trustee Moore Baldoff?
Aye.
Motion carries seven, zero.
All right, moving on to item 10, reports of village officials, 10A, village president. I just want to tell the two, the candidate forum was really well run yesterday, and I appreciate the turnout. And again, thank you for the three candidates who are running. And then it's sunshine week, and so I'd like to ask trustee Stokbrand if she'd like to read the proclamation. I think there's a copy on your desk.
Sure. Whereas the Sunshine Week, a national initiative that emphasizes the importance of open and transparent government, has been designated on March 12 to March 18. And whereas public records law, sometimes called sunshine laws, exists to provide people information about the working of government pursuant to Wisconsin's public records law, and whereas Wisconsin State Statute, Chapter 19 declares, all persons are entitled to the greatest possible information regarding the affairs of government and the official acts of those officers and employees who represent them, and whereas most village records are public unless they contain information made private by law. Now therefore be it resolved that the village recognizes Sunshine Week, March 12 to March 18, 2023, dated at Shorewood, Wisconsin, this sixth day of March, 2020.
Thank you. 10B, village trustees, any reports? Trust your sink.
I want to echo a little bit what you were saying. It was fantastic. The League of Women Voters, as well as the Shorewood Women's Club held a candidate forum over the weekend. It was it was very well attended. The event was very smooth. The audio was worked really well this time around, I think, for the most part, you know, I think it was is really great, you know, just a great all great event all around. It was is. It's always good when we can get that those kind of residents out and engage them and talk about issues, you know, we it's hard to. It's hard to do that when you're on Facebook. It's hard to do that sometimes in these meetings. So I think it was. It was just a fantastic opportunity for Kathy, myself and Sam to sit down and be able to share our feelings and our vision for for Shorewood. So I really appreciated appreciated that event.
Other reports? Trustees.
I would just like to thank Rebecca for putting the proclamation in the packet and to thank Rebecca and Bart for their work on those especially event fees. I think it's been a long, a lot of work. Thank you.
Other trustee reports? One thing I wanted to say, I went to the C say CC project community forum last week, and the team did an amazing job, complete with like hands on interaction about like what size of the pipe it's going to be and everything. And I mean, it's just really, really, there weren't a ton of residents there, but just the amount of work that went into it was really impressive. So, yeah.
You remind me. I got one more thing. So at that say, it was either that meeting or the Shorewood Shark Tank and I, you know, I I went to the Shorewood Shark Tank and and that was very inspiring. It was. It was a great turnout, a lot of really, really fantastic ideas from residents, some eighth graders and every every idea had sort of a synergy, had a, you know, you know, a relationship to one another. And I'm really excited. I hope some of those ideas actually come to the village board because I think some of them are like.
They all require village board participation.
There there are some, you know, some folks that are just want to fly underground and do underground things in the community, which, you know, which is fine, but there are a lot of lot of lot of.
Major policy issues coming forward.
Exactly. But, you know.
These eighth graders.
It's fantastic.
So they got funding and now they just need approval? Is that what?
Oh, boy.
I I know this group of kids, they're friends with my son and we have some very entrepreneurial middle schoolers. So.
Well, and with 10 years on the board, I was like, oh, it's six years ago. There was a kid who came. Anyway.
So we'll be interested to see how that transpires. Hopefully, they don't just like set up shop and and work like some of the other residents that were pitching kind of do things in the village, but but it was great to see that engagement and and I can't wait to see those ideas kind of come before us.
That's great. All right, village manager?
Thank you. I have something to report on tonight. I want to welcome George Johnson, who's been very kind and. Lengthy meeting. So first day, if you have an opportunity to stop in at any time, you can find him up here on the second floor. He's joining our second floor crew. And yeah, so I'm excited. Welcome. Thank you.
If you'd like to, not to put you on the spot, but if you'd like to say anything or tell us anything about yourself, you're welcome to, but you don't have to at all. Okay, it's a long first day. I just started a new job last week and I was like exhausted on Friday. I think I went to bed at like 6:30. All right. Items of future consideration? Hearing none, motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at 9:26. Thank you, everyone.